So let's start. Good evening, everybody. This is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, and today is Thursday, November 10th. For our hearing, we will begin with our regular meeting. In which we, well, we're going to begin with making a decision, and then we'll go on to the regular meeting. We have some postponements this evening. They are item four Eagle Hill Foundation for a final site plan and special permit. At forty-five Glenville Road, number seven La France Development. At sixty La France Road for a final site plan and special permit. And number eight Darian Partners LLC for a final coastal site plan. And special permit at twenty-six Homestead Lane, also known as the Homestead. And with that, should we need? Alternates this evening, I believe Mr. Well, it doesn't matter that your Mr. Yesky will be recused from one discussion item, but since it's not a vote, we will not seat an alternate. We'll all just discuss. And with that, we will begin with a decision on the. I would like to take a motion to move up. The decision on Greenwich Hospital to making it the decisions on Greenwich Hospital to making them right now. Rather than at the end of the meeting. Could I have a motion to move the rezoning decision and the sign up final site plan and special permit decision? Up to to do it now.
Oh, moved.
Mr. Yesky has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Macrae has seconded. I'm just going to take a voice vote without doing call. All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right. Okay. Seated on this decision, as you know. Our Albin, Macrae, Levy, Yesky, and Lo. And with that, what I'd like to suggest is that we make them, that we hear a motion on the rezoning. And we get it seconded. And then we have a discussion on the rezone itself, but that we put a motion on on the floor that we can discuss. I'm going to turn to our secretary and ask if by chance he's in a position to make a motion on the rezoning.
Wait, let me move over. I'm in a position now. Okay, shall we?
Got another funny one.
It's Thursday. Sixteen thirty-eight Lake Avenue and fifty-four. To sixty-four Lake Lafayette Place. Application PLPZ twenty twenty-two, three five two for zoning map amendment. Whereas the applicant Greenwich Hospital and G and H Realty Holding is seeking to rezone eight. Parcels equal to ninety-four thousand eight hundred sixty-nine square feet of property from the RMF zone. To the H two zone. A zoning map amendment must be in accordance with the planning, conservation, and development. And a comprehensive plan of the building zone regulations and the zoning map of the town of Greenwich. P O C D, the two thousand nineteen Town of Greenwich Plan of Conservation is underpinned by six guiding principles. And they're listed one through six in the. First chapter. The comprehensive plan is under section six, one, one, three. Of use regulations and special requirements for the hospital zones. H one and H two and state the intent and purpose of the hospital zones. They are provide development of hospital facilities to meet the town of Greenwich major's medical needs. Provide a method of hospital for a hospital within the town of Greenwich to develop adequate space within the zone to meet future needs. Promote comprehensive planning of a major hospital in conjunction with supporting facilities. And ensure compatibility of a hospital's surrounding land uses and zoning in the town's plan of development. The commission finds that West Cog issued comments stated seven, seven twenty-two. Indicating that proposal of a local interest is of local interest with a minimal interintermunicipal impact. Therefore, it's not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. There has been a demonstrated gap that could be filled with a facility that better addresses the. Oncological needs of the community. The applicant presented that forty percent of the residents seek their healthcare in other places, primarily New York City. To pursue services that are not provided or deemed just sufficiently locally and. Then that every year. There are nearly six hundred new cases of cancer diagnosed annually in the town of Greenwich. Nearly all cancer types show growth rates between twenty, twenty-six percent in the next ten years. The proposal is in keeping with the two thousand nineteen Town of Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development. Which is underpinned by. Guiding six. Six guiding principles. And the zoning meets with the order of prior priority, the following. GP guiding principle one. Section one, section two, guiding principle two, section one. Guiding principle three, section one. Guiding principle four. Sections one, two, three, and four. Guiding principle five. Section one and guiding principle. Six sections one. Just got to be a guiding principle, section one, cut that right. Okay, the comprehensive plan is over eight defined medical uses throughout all the health center and clinic are not defined. Previously, the Benheim facility, which is sustained was found to be an H two use. And it's. And what is before the commission is an updated facility to meet the current oncological needs of the community. The commission finds that the comprehensive care center is a clinic. It is an H two use. And it is inappropriate to rezone the property for this use, provided the best quality of health services, as noted in the P O C D. This location provides oncologists able to see their patients. Who are admitted to the hospital before and after a during clinic. Eliminates the needs for patients and caregivers to travel by car between multiple locations. And provides immediate access to emergency resources. Major medical needs in Greenwich are for cardiovascular and clinical care, which reflects most communities in America. So therefore, motion to approve the rezone of the properties located at sixteen to thirty-eight Lake Avenue. And fifty-four to sixty-four Lafayette Place. From the RMF zone to the H two zone.
Do I have a second? I'll second that so that we can open the discussion. Okay, a motion has been made by Macrae and Albin has seconded. In, I'm assuming that Peter Levy, who is normally our second or just didn't unmute in time. So with that, could I ask you guys for comments? And input on the motion that is before us?
I'll, if I may, make a few comments.
Sure.
First, let me say that I have a personally a longstanding appreciation for Greenwich. Hospitals role in our community. I happened to be born there. And over the years, along with members of my family, have received nothing but excellent care. That said, with regard to this application. At the end of the day, we must all, I feel, be guided by our regulations and our. Twenty nineteen P O C D. The application, the applicant's selection of this particular site. Seems to be in direct conflict with our town's P O C D's primary guiding principles. And I struggle with the need to sacrifice. Residential neighborhood to offer enhanced cancer care. Given the availability of a variety. Of more commercial sites, both within Greenwich and nearby and in nearby communities. Many of which are already. Home to a host of specialized healthcare services and centers. And.
Aaron, we just lost, oh, he's back.
No, he's here.
I apologize, Mr. Lo. Sorry, I thought we lost this believing.
We did for a nanosecond. He was switching computers.
That's okay.
But it's okay. Yeah.
Also, I would say the regulations are clear about the intent and purpose of hospital zones. Including meeting the major medical needs of the town of Greenwich. And I remain skeptical about the fundamental need for a comprehensive cancer center here in town. While roughly. Two thirds of states throughout the country have no more than a single comprehensive cancer center. The town of Greenwich has at least four such facilities within an hour's drive. As well as several satellite centers of renowned major cancer hospitals that are less than twenty minutes away. Those are my comments.
Okay. Mr. Yesky?
I agree with Commissioner Lowe's comments. I support him. The last meeting I said I would like to take a look at. Everything submitted in this case. This new application and we have. Staff has provided us with background. And I've gone through all of that. And I'm prepared to vote at this point in time.
Okay, I want to comment on one other thing that Mr. Macrae mentioned. In talking about the zone itself. It brings to, I believe that. This meets the. Health, this is a health center because and we asked the applicant this question. And I think it's a lot like. The dialysis center that we recently approved and. One of the things I've been pondering is a question we asked the applicant a great deal was why not put this in a commercial district? Health centers are allowed in. It's use, they're allowed in its use for. And they're allowed in the L B, the C G B, the G B, and the G B O. And in my mind. This would fit, and we've mentioned that several times, this is a good fit to have in a more commercial zone as well. So the whole issue of the rezoning I struggled with as well was does this have to be an H, H two? Then, of course, I have the same issues and we've kicked it around for months and months. I have the same kinds of questions. About the appropriateness and consistency with the P O C D. As well as with the requirements of six, one thirteen. So I'm kind of in the same place. I was really looking, this has been, and we keep saying this, has been so, so hard to do. So hard to do because we. We've lived the cancer situation as a commission. So we've, we've experienced it, and this has been a very hard decision. But I, I still. Lean towards the protection of neighborhoods that's in our P O C D. As being the first and most important of the objectives. Based on that, let, I don't know, does anybody, Peter Levy, do you have anything to add? Peter? I get nervous when he goes quiet. Peter, I see you're there. Can you unmute? There he is.
I just wanted to coin a phrase that H two is, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, and. And I concur with fellow commissioners about all these issues that, you know, mitigate the. The H two designation. I think that if. If this kind of use can be done somewhere else. I'm, I'm.
Okay. All right, you're breaking up a little bit, but I think what you said is that you would rather see it in a business, in a different, not be zoning. Yeah. Okay, Peter, keep talking so we know when you can hear us again. Okay, we've sort of lost him. I really was hoping this wouldn't happen. Peter? Good, he's back.
I'm, I'm just.
Peter, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Yes, if, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're breaking up.
If, if, yes, if, if.
Is he in a car?
Yes, I had asked. Yes, Peter, we still can't hear you. You're totally gone now. Try again.
I can hear you.
Okay, all right. There you go. Okay, that's good.
All right, so, okay. Anyway, I concur with.
Has him to stop on the road right now. We're not going to be able to do anything here. He's got to stop where there's reception.
Yeah, I'm, I'm home. So. I concur with the other commissioners. The, the, the. Fact that this use can be. In a commercial zone. And doesn't need to be here. Is a real issue for us and for me. And that's what we struggle with here.
Okay. All right, it doesn't sound real.
I, I, I'm finding that, you know, when looking at this as a rezone. And our applying a rezone as we're supposed to do to our P O C D. It, you know, it ticks sections of each one of the guiding principles of the P O C D. You know, it's, it's, we're talking about actually, is this the right place for this? You know, you could build, you know, pretty much anything anywhere else. But I think the fact to me right now is. This is a hospital use that they're proposing. They're trying to say, you know, let me, let me make this a hospital zone. And that it's part of the P O C D and P O C D says this is probably a good idea in this area. Also, they've gone out another way really to kind of, you know, look at how, what the P O C D says. In terms of providing things back to the town. Thriving commercial centers, best quality infrastructure, cultural institutions and health services. I mean. More green space. That's guiding principle four. Educational facilities, you know, you know, their teaching. There, you know, those kind of things. And I think number one, preserve our community character. I'm looking at this as what is the community there? It's, yes, residential in tall buildings. Yes, residential in small buildings. But this is, you know, really kind of a. A use and a give back to say, yes, we're trying to, we're trying to preserve that community character, the building smaller. More green space, those kind of things. So I think it's to me. It's ticking all of the boxes, all of the guiding principles in the P O C D as we're supposed to look at. You know, and multiples inside those guiding principles. So using the plan of conservation. This is what we're, what we're supposed to be using to guide us. I think it's there and it's guiding us.
Anybody want to respond to Mr. Macrae? Okay. I think it's a question of how we prioritize the P O C D guiding principles. And the first and foremost is the, the, the community. Character and sense of place. Housing opportunities is the second most important, and that's what we're looking at is this is a, an RMF neighborhood. It's adjacent to a historic district. I, I agree, Nick. One of the things that we have said consistently is our P O C D makes both sets of points. But what we are guided by is that the priority, the prioritizations in our P O C D, what is the first thing that we list? And what's the last thing we list? And I think what I'm hearing is that's where they're leaning. Let's try to, what do you think? I'm just doing process here. Take a vote on where this is and as you might. If, if I could offer. Depending on that how go, how that goes, I have an alternate motion to put on the floor if y'all are willing to listen. To an alternate motion if, but let's vote on this one.
I would just like to say finally, you know, just to finally say that. I think in terms of a character of neighborhood. This is one of the two. Mixed neighborhoods. Of, of, single-family residences, offices, large multifamily residences. The, the hospital itself. And it's, you know, starting from. From the, the Post Road. And that commercial area to. The, the First Presbyterian Church, the Fairfield House. At Benheim Center, those kind of things, forty-nine Lake. You know, there is a real mix in this neighborhood. And, you know, it's, if we're saying, what is the neighborhood? My thought is that it's very mixed. And that this, this use still fits in.
Any comments on that?
Well, I think that, I think that. It, it, on paper, it fits in. But there's a community there. That's very skeptical and there's a lot of unknowns. And there are other options for such a facility. So. Does it need to be here? Well, that's the question.
Okay. Let's take a vote on this resolution and then let's give it another shot. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Yesky?
Nay.
Mr. Levy?
Nay.
Mr. Macrae?
Yay.
Albin is also nay, and with that, the motion fails for one. I'm gonna give it a crack to coming from the other side, okay? And as I do that, I am going to apologize to you guys because I got a little prolific over the weekend. And then I had three days to get more prolific. So here we go. As to the come, as to. As to the application of Greenwich Hospital and G H Realty Holding for a zoning map amendment. To rezone properties located at sixteen thirty-eight Lake Avenue and fifty-four sixty-four Lafayette Place. Eight parcels equalling ninety-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet of property. From the RMF zone to the H two zone. Whereas section six, one thirteen. Use regulations and special requirements for hospital zones. H one and H two. States among others that the intent and purpose of the hospital zones to be. Provide for the development of hospital facilities to meet the town of Greenwich's major medical needs. And to ensure compatibility of a hospital with surrounding land uses and zoning. And the town's plan of development. Whereas the objective of the proposed rezoning to H two is to provide for the construction of a Smilow Cancer Center. In the town of Greenwich. The commission hereby notes the following. As to providing for the development of hospital facilities to meet the town of Greenwich's major medical needs. The highest level of cancer care is provided by comprehensive cancer centers as recognized by the National Cancer Institute. There are currently seven of these facilities with one hour of, within one hour of Greenwich. In addition, the Stanford Bennett Cancer Center located six miles from Greenwich. Provides care through its partnership with Dana Farber Brigham. A recognized comprehensive cancer center. The White Plains Hospital through its partnership with Montefiore Einstein Comprehensive Cancer Center. Provides care ten miles from Greenwich. Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Center has a satellite facility in Harrison, New York, eight miles from Greenwich. Memorial Sloan Kettering also has a collaboration with Norwalk Hospital. Fourteen miles from Greenwich, which is known as M S K Physicians at Norwalk Hospital. The applicant has acknowledged that along with the facility already in Greenwich. There are currently fourteen more Smilow Cancer Centers in Connecticut. And some of these facilities are not co-located with hospitals. The applicant has advised that the proposed Smilow Greenwich Cancer Center would offer. Clinical trial and innovative treatment opportunities not currently available in Greenwich. However, the applicant has also acknowledged that sixty percent of the patients projected for the cancer center. In the proposed H two zone are expected to reside outside of Greenwich. The applicant asserted. That for Greenwich as an aging community, cancer rates would potentially rise in the future. However, the public record for this application. Also includes state Public Health Department statistics of declining cancer incidence rates in both New York and Connecticut. Is worth noting as well that Greenwich residents do not always age in place and may relocate to other geographic areas. When I read you the next sentence, you got to give you, give it a hard thought whether you agree. Despite ongoing requests by it in this regard. The commission finds the applicant has not provided compelling data. To support how specific current and future needs of the town of Greenwich. Are not being met by existing local area cancer care facilities. Turning to the plan of, of plan of development and compatibility with it. The twenty nineteen Town of Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development is underpinned by six guiding principles. Which are listed in order of priority as follows. Preserve our community character and sense of place. Develop housing opportunities for the future. Support top quality educational facilities. Sustain and improve our natural environment and landscape. Maintain economic vitality and thriving commercial centers. Provide the best quality infrastructure, municipal facilities, cultural institutions, and health services. As to guiding principle one. As stated in the twenty nineteen P O C D. The importance of Greenwich's community character and sense of place cannot be overstated. The proposed rezoning removes residential and mixed-use buildings from eight parcels of land. With a proposed conversion to institutional use. The proposed rezoning is in close proximity to a national register historic district. The proposed facility would provide a hundred and twenty parking spaces where a hundred and sixty-nine parking spaces are needed. Parking is expected to be available at other hospital garages. But patients would need to be guided by illuminated signage at the lots. The applicant's consultant Ty and Bond testified that hospital visitors from other municipalities can struggle to locate the existing facility. And would benefit from significant wayfinding assistance. As informally discussed, this signage would be institutional in character and possibly ubiquitous. It is a cause for concern that this would transform the existing streetscape of the neighborhood into that of an urban medical center. As to guiding principle two. As stated in the twenty nineteen P O C D. Residential neighborhoods are the primary building block of the town. Comprising the majority of the land use and acting as the main setting for day-to-day life of most residents. In reducing the number of parcels zoned for residential use, this proposal is counter to guiding principle two. Guiding principle six. The applicant has stated the intent to provide best quality cancer care services. But has not demonstrated how the proposed facility meets the specific unmet needs of Greenwich. Or why the facility cannot be located elsewhere, be it in Greenwich or another community. The proposed rezoning would permanently alter the correct character of the immediate residential vicinity. Which is counter to the highest priority of the twenty nineteen Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development. It also runs counter to guiding principle two regarding the importance of housing options and the recognition. That residential neighborhoods are the primary building block of the town. Finally, although the intent of the proposal is to enhance the quality of cancer care in Greenwich. The fundamental need for this change has not been fully established. Despite an ongoing line of inquiry from the commission. Based on the proceeding, the commission concludes that the benefits of providing additional cancer care through rezoning. And the proposed new facility have not been shown to offset the loss of residential uses. Or to be of consistency with the twenty nineteen P O C D. The commission therefore finds that the proposed rezoning from RMF to H two. Meets neither the key intents and purposes of the H two zone. Nor the highest priorities of the twenty nineteen Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development and is hereby denied. But in denying this application for rezoning to the H two. The commission notes that a comprehensive cancer center, as described by the applicant. Would correspond most closely to a health center. Which is within business use group four of the Greenwich zoning regulations. A health center therefore could be considered in the Greenwich L B, C G B, G B, and G B O zones. I have another little bit on the, on those zones if anybody wants, but I think you've got the flavor. Of, and I'm sorry it's so long. I just kept writing and writing. Could I have a second on that so we can discuss it?
Second.
I think Yesky raised his hand first, so I'm going to go with Yesky. All right, folks. So, um, this is a different, very different position. Where are you on this?
Taking your vote?
No, I just wanna know if there's any changes you would make, any comments? Katie, if you wanna say something, please jump in. Okay, you look like you wanted to say something. The, any comments on this? Any changes you would make to the resolution? I know, um, it's extensive.
I, I wouldn't make any changes, I agree with most of it. I think when you come down to it, this is just a major conflict with the two most important objectives of the P O C D. And that's residential and housing. I include neighborhoods in the residential. There's lots of other factors. I think most people have expressed that we'd love to have something like this, but not in this neighborhood.
Yeah, and this is what's so very hard is that we all know people who would benefit from having this kind of facility. But it's, the question is, you have a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. Can you go elsewhere? Can you, um, can you achieve this other option? And we do have a richness of care available to us right now. Which, you know, we, the applicant was very responsible and dutiful in being open with us and transparent with us and telling us about what's in the area, although I think we all also researched it. Nick, I know you don't agree, do you wanna make some comments? I mean, I'm guessing you don't agree since.
I don't agree. I don't agree, and I think actually, as I, as I see this rezone, that, as I was saying before, i- it's, it's, this neighborhood is a very diversified, mixed area of buildings of different scales, uh, uses of different types. You know, i- you could, you could say, yes, this could be in another place. But I think one of the things that I'm thinking is that, yes, it can be in another place, but the property is owned by the applicant. You know? They, they wanna make the best use of their, their property. It's right next door to, uh, you know, uh, an, an H two zone and an H one zone. If, if the H two and H one zones don't work in that neighborhood because of the same thing, then maybe you, you know, we should, we have evaluated that differently back then. I don't know. But I think actually the, it, it's talking about issues that you brought up of traffic and cars going back and forth. Uh, what I found in the testimony that was provided us, that that, those issues were concerns of theirs and they did address them. To minimize that understanding, it's a mixed-use neighborhood. Uh, also in talks, talk about actually the proposal that was provided to us actually creates a park, open space.
But I, I have to agree with you and, and this isn't with the rezone. I think that the, the site plan that the applicant created is fabulous. I love the site plan. I just, as I look at what six one thirteen says, even if it wasn't primarily meeting the needs of Greenwich and it has sixty percent of the users being from elsewhere in order to work, that, that would be okay to, but it's, it's the losing of a, of an established neighborhood. Yes, it's multifamily, yes, it's RMF. Yes, it's, yeah, losing an established residential neighborhood in exchange. I, I honestly think that a cancer center of this magnitude would be an asset for Greenwich. A lot of the issue is around the rezone, and I think we've been saying, we've been voicing that concern. It would be wonderful. The other thing is that, um, I mean, that six one thirteen probably, you know, it says primarily the needs of Greenwich, but I mean, their point, they addressed that. The other thing, you made a point, Nick, and I know I'm not gonna sway you, but on highest and best use, it is not ours to do highest and best use for the applicant, ours is highest and best use for the town. And that's why we have the P O C D. So we have to decide what's right for the town for highest and best use. And I think we would all say to you, yeah, let's, I mean, a, a world-class ca- cancer center would be cool to have. But how do we do it? And, and, um, so there it is. Anything we can do to sway you, Nick?
No.
Okay. All right, and nobody else wants to add anything to this?
No, I think that we've, we've, uh, I think you put it very well. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to, but you did a very good job of, of laying out the issue uh, about the detractions from the application. But, um, you were not as forthcoming with, uh, describing the, the zones that would be suitable.
I can add that, well, sure, hold on.
Wanted to.
Yeah, here we go. So I'm gonna amend the resolution then, and I'm adding this. A health center therefore could be considered in the Greenwich L B, C G B, G B, and G B O zones. It is of note that the L B zone is intended to supply merchandise and services for the nearby residential and business areas, and it serves local consumers from beyond the immediate neighborhood because of its central location and its greater flexibility and multiplicity of uses. While the zone serves both the surrounding neighborhoods and the community at large, for the most part, it does not seek to attract its clientele from beyond the town. The C G B zone is a mixed-use, moderate-density transition zone within the central business district, separating the high-intensity commercial uses of the town's prime retail and business area. This zone, the G B and the G B O would appear to be the most closely aligned with the stated purposes of the cancer care center. Does that help you? And I got ten more pages I didn't read, you guys, just so you know.
That was good. Yes, and, and just, just the access in, in a commercial district is, is preferable uh, as well, because, uh, this, people coming to a residential community and, and going through the arteries of town that are not commercial is not ideal.
Alrighty then. Think we're there. Um, so I'll take the vote. Go in the same order as we did before, I guess. Mac, uh, it was Lowe first, right?
Can we be clear on what it is we are voting on?
The, the, the motion to rezone as amended by the additional two paragraphs I read regarding the business zones.
This is a motion to deny, correct?
The motion to deny, yes.
So, uh, a vote to deny, a vote to deny.
You just vote the same, you say I, if you vote I, you're voting to deny.
Correct. My vote is I to deny.
All right, Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Nay.
And Albin is aye, and with that, the motion passes, uh, four one. And we can go on to the regular part of our meeting.
Oh, Madam Chair, you have to take a motion on the site plan.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. So with that, um, Nick, now how do we do that?
Why do we have to do that?
Because it's before us, so we have to act on it, even though.
This is how we do that.
Yeah, just to explain it to you. So it's before us, so we have to, we are required by law to decide it, but it is now becomes legally impossible for it to exist because the rezone hasn't happened, so my apologies. And, um, there you go. So, Mr. McRae, I guess you have to make a motion to deny the site plan, or I guess you could make it to approve, and then we'll start over again.
This is, uh, sixteen thirty-eight Lake Avenue and fifty-four sixty-four Lafayette Place, Application PLBZ twenty twenty-two three one five one for a final site plan special permit. Applicant is seeking to construct a fifty-five thousand seven hundred square foot three-story medical building with below-grade parking for a hundred twenty vehicles, new driveways, outdoor seating areas, landscaping configurations to the Lake Avenue, Lafayette Place, William Street, Perry Ridge Road, traffic circle, crosswalks, and related site improvements on a ninety-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square foot property located in the H two's, ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four, uh, eight hundred and sixty-nine square foot property. Uh, whereas, uh, per PLBZ twenty, uh, twenty-two, three, five, two for a zoning map amendment, uh, which was denied, application to, uh, the commission finds that the, uh, site plan special permit should be denied, whereas the, as the H two zone was not granted.
Is it okay for us to say that it's a beautiful site plan?
No, it's a nut and, cut and dried, yes or no on this one, because they didn't get the first part.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yesky has seconded. Mr. Lowe, how do you vote?
But, uh, nay, I mean.
No, no, you vote.
No, no, this is a denial.
This is a denial, so you just vote I, if you wanna say nay.
Yeah, in favor of the denial unless you're not in favor of it.
Right, I'm in favor of the not, denial, aye.
Now you understand why the RTM has a hard time when Alexis does this to them. Mr. Yesky?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. Mr. McRae, I'm gonna let you vote last.
Yes, as the site plan, uh, as the properties did not receive the H two zone, uh, vote to, uh, yay on the denial.
All right, thank you all, so that's five nothing. I know you guys, this was super, super hard.
I need a break.
Yeah, it was super hard. This is terrible weight of this decision because, um, it impacts lives. So, and most of our decisions don't potentially do that, so it is, was very, very hard. Okay, so now we can go to zoning, zoning, zoning applications. Uh, with that, we begin our regular meeting. Fred Durant and Myung Jong Chung, Myung, yeah Chung, uh, three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road and Sixth Neighborly Way for a final subdivision for a proposed lot line revision between two existing parcels to transfer thirteen thirty square feet uh, from Neighborly Way to Palmer Hill. And with that, we have Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a lot line revision, and Pat, if you could bring up, uh, the presentation material.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This involves an exchange of one thousand three hundred and thirty square feet from Sixth Neighborly Way to three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road and exchange of two thousand two hundred and eleven square feet from three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road to Sixth Neighborly Way. This is one step in a four-step process that we're, uh, pursue, pursuing on this. Step two is the next application you have. Step three is to get a variance to be able to locate the driveway where it is now rather than in the proposed accessway. And step four would be if we get the variance, uh, to come back to you uh, with a final subdivision, re-subdivision plan, which would meet all of the town requirements. So if we can go to slide two, please, Pat. So, uh, the first piece from Neighborly Way to Palmer Hill is outlined in, uh, blue or green, and the, uh, piece going from Palmer Hill to Neighborly Way is highlighted in, in yellow. Uh, I wanna add that the piece that would go to Palmer Hill is solely to establish accessway to a street. It is not intended to be a driveway, and I, I'm not sure that, that Public Works in looking at this understood that. We wanna keep the driveway that the house has right now onto the, uh, the one that goes down to Palmer Hill. And that's why we have the variance in front of the Board of Appeals next week because our regulations require that if you're a rear lot and have an accessway, you have to have your driveway located within that accessway under Section six dash one thirty-one. So, uh, we're asking the, 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 uh, Board of Appeals to, oh, grant a variance of that for the simple reason that you can see the, the stone walls that are between the parking area for the house at three twenty-eight and Neighborly Way. Those are eight feet high. So it, it, you can't get there from here. And frankly, um, having been on Neighborly Way, uh, recently, and fortunately I was able to turn around in, uh, San Romeo's driveway, it's very, very tight. The accessway and driveway that runs from this property down to Palmer Hill is actually mu- much more easy to navigate, uh, than Neighborly Way, and it serves only the three houses currently, and we would post it to a four on the next application. So, um, both these properties, uh, are conforming now. They will be conforming, uh, after the exchange. The question came up yesterday about any kind of structures that was on either parcel. Uh, the piece going from Neighborly Way to, uh, Palmer Hill, uh, has nothing on it. And, uh, the piece going from Palmer Hill to Neighborly Way has a patio and a fire pit. Uh, the owners of Neighborly Way would want to keep that, uh, as it is. Uh, for some reason, we had sent the green sheet over to Wetlands back in September. Must have been when no one was there. The maternity leaves and such. So, uh, paternity, maternity leaves. So, uh, we have that, we sent that over to staff today, and, uh, we would ask for your approval.
It's still, you're saying, take me through this, we were really struggling with the widening yesterday.
The widening of.
Yeah, of, it, take me through why DPW is wrong again.
Because they're thinking that we're going to use this accessway to get to Neighborly Way, and we have no intention of doing that. If I don't get the variance next week, you will not see a final site plan, a final subdivision application before you, because we need to get the variance. There's no way to access Neighborly Way from this site without uh, a, a, a twenty-foot accessway would have to be much wider, given how great the topography is to be able to put a road through there. So, we're not intending ever to do what Public Works thinks we shouldn't do, and we agree.
So.
No, no one's gonna wanna do that.
So why did, how did we get this far in this? And Public Works has this misunderstanding that you're highlighting to us now?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, I thought you were like, okay. So you're, you're saying, for example, um, that we could have you put it on the, you're gonna, you file a new map, and we have you put it in the notes of the map. Would in no time now or in the future, would there be access to Neighborly Way? From that.
That, that, that would be fine.
Okay.
And I hope, and I hope you'll be able to also allow for a note that says that the Board of Appeals grant, granted a variance to allow the driveway to remain where it is.
Well, yes, okay.
But that, but that's for next week.
Yeah, that's for next week, and that would not necessarily, would you want that to be on the MYLAR? On the filing?
It's the other way, it's the other way around. If, if Z B A gives you the, gives you the okay to, uh, not have a driveway, you wanna have that recorded on the map as well to say that they, they said it was okay.
Okay, Bob Baralack?
And this is gonna be another one of my patented naive, ruby, you know, rube questions.
Those, oh, yeah, then this is how Dennis always used to introduce this question. Pay attention, man.
Dennis is, Dennis has always been smarter and better-looking than me.
He's got better hair, that's for sure.
If, if you get the variance and can keep the driveway that you have, that you wanna use, why do the, the lot line revision?
Because the property requires access to a road.
Because the property requires access to a road. Even if it's not using it for its driveway, you must under the regulations have access to a public road. You either need access on a 20 foot right of way or you need to have frontage. And this doesn't, and when we go to the next application, we would not have the accessway. That currently exists for the 40,000 square feet. And we don't have any frontage, so we need this to establish.
And your variance cannot ask for a variance of those regulations that require frontage and access?
No, I actually, I have taken those in to the Board of Appeals previously and this is. This is how they are looking for us to approach it. It's the same thing that we did. On the doubling road subdivision where we didn't want to put the accessway going out onto Boulder Brook. And they granted a variance for us to be able to use the existing driveway to doubling.
And that's it. Go ahead.
Katie. And just from a planning standpoint, you want every lot, as Mr. Hegney was just pointing out in our regulations, to have frontage or access. But it's the reason that he's pursuing that as opposed to the other, the other way around is as you, as he's. Mentioned a few projects, if there's some sort of impediment like a steep slope or a beautiful tree or something like that where you can't put the. Put the driveway in the accessway, that's a more reasonable and hardship oriented. Variance than one is for not being able to provide the basics of a lot, which is access to a to a road.
Say that again, I, it's, go ahead, Bob, you go first, you raise your hand.
No, no, I, I meant to, I meant to lower my hand because.
I lowered it, I lowered it for you.
I re-loared it, sorry. I get it, I get it.
Okay, so you're saying that it is a better, it's a more rational variance, Katie?
Simply because the the basics are of a lot or is the ability to have frontage on a road. You don't want to have landlocked lots, that's a big, that's a big problem. So if you can't access, you know, if you, you need to be able to have access. Through either frontage or through the accessway, and if you can't do it the way a regulation is required, that's a more reasonable. Variance because it usually involves some sort of environmental hardship as in this case, a steep slope.
Okay.
Mr. Hegney, a few questions? Certainly, Mr. McRae. What's the height of the wall between dwelling number six on RZR and the leftovers or the the new area that's being added to that? If it's eight feet at the the new accessway to Neighborly Way. Do we have any idea how high that is?
That, that's at a, that's at a much higher elevation than than the driveway. Because the driveway drives into the. Thanks, Pat. So the driveway is at the basement level. And there's a retaining wall and then that pool is at the level of the first floor. So you have a whole story higher and the patio area is a few steps up. From the, from the pool area. So you're probably. Ten feet higher than the driveway.
Okay, so you're 10 feet higher from the driveway and from the driveway down to that lot is, that wall height, as you said. Is about eight feet. So the new parcel Y really has no significant physical connection to. A parcel RZR because you're dropping down an 18 foot wall or so?
No, no, it's Mr. DeAndrea.
Mr. DeAndrea, would you raise your hand?
Because I. I, I don't think that there's much of an impediment there at all.
Alrighty, Mr. DeAndrea is here to help you out, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. DeAndrea. Okay, Mr. Hegney wanted you to respond to something.
He was heading in the right direction. The way the home at number 324 was constructed, the garage is under. And so when you walk out the first floor, you're walking at the same elevation as the pool. And then on that plan that is on the screen now, you see the elevation of the ledge and yes, it does climb up. And you see the retaining wall that shows that we've got this high land through the ledge area. And then it basically levels off at that on Neighborly Way. The, just want to point out to continue the conversation about the accessway. Our regulations, of course, in 6-132, 131, 132 has. The minimum frontage exceptions and those are written into the regulations, so. That's not an uncommon situation as Katie pointed out to save topography or a tree or unnecessary. Pavement in this case also. So when Mr. Duranty originally built the the property. You can almost count the risers in the stairs, looks like six, landing another seven. So what's that about? Let's just make it round numbers, 15. You're, you know, eight to 10 feet higher in that corner. You see where I'm pointing at the north, the, the, you know, the northwest corner of the house and the stairs to get you from the driveway. Up to that pool level. So climbing up that eight to 10 feet in that corner. That's right, we're, we're Pat circling. So that's, that's the issue that I think we're just demonstrating. There's physical impediment to going. You know, out to Neighborly Way. Neighborly Way is deficient in in width. Nobody wants to come in off that unnecessarily. And as Tom pointed out, we have ample width in the access, in the driveway rather, coming up from Valley Road to reach. The new parcel. So all those things are favorable rationale for the Board of Appeals to consider.
Actually, Pat, if you could go to slide eight. That's the the GIS topographic survey. And what it does is it shows that the elevation where the patio is is the same on. Both parcels. So if we could zoom in on that, the, the, what color would that be? Red or pink?
So, so you see near the pool on the, on the number six Neighborly Way, that elevation is 80. It starts to slope down, but you come back up to the knob, you know. Exiting from what you call Fred's driveway at 70, back up to that 76, 77 elevation. Through those walls.
So you have the 85 contour line that straddles the property line. And that's the portion of property that would go to Sixth Neighborly Way. So it actually works very well with with that site and. And it's something that is of value to the people at Neighborly Way.
So that piece of property with the, the fire pit, etc., is at the same elevation as. The Neighborly Way number six? Yes, if I walked out the back door, I can walk right over to the, there's no wall there then or anything.
It's showing a wall.
There is.
There's a big grade change, right?
Great, Mr. Yeah, Mr. DeAndrea, how tall is that wall at that location?
I don't have the exact number right now, but from the knob, what you see on the parcel that's being conveyed with the, with the patio. That knob is at roughly 85 and and the house elevation is roughly 80. So the wall would be roughly five feet high. When the Duranty family owned both parcels. The addition that you see, the L shaped piece at the back of that number six Neighborly Way. Fred's father added that addition and at that time, they cut out part of the knob and and put up a retaining wall. So it's now physically easy to negotiate down from the 80. To the elevation of the patio that Fred has. So that will be a. My, you know, what do you call it? Accommodated so that there's easy access from number six. To the piece that they would be gaining.
The Y piece, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It's, I must say, this is a good plan.
I thought you were gonna save that to the next application.
Right, I know. We'll wait for that, but we worked it out over a period of time and it it really makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Laurel, can you go back to the site plan? Where the subdivision map? The blue box that shows the access. Can you zoom in there just to the left, left of it, there's a note, this is Neighborly Way is a part of a private right of way. Mr. Hegney, does or will this ax, new access? Have legal access on the private, private right of way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does it now or it's going to have to have it?
It needs it in order for us to go ahead with the next application.
Okay, and who grant, who would actually grant that? All of the people who live off of that, off of Neighborly Way?
It would go with the portion of property that's being purchased from Sixth Neighborly Way.
Oh, so this part you've, you've not done yet.
No, can I ask, can I raise that? Can I answer that a little bit more?
Oh, if you and Mr. Hegney want to have an argument, we can go to dinner.
Argument, it's not an argument, it's just reinforcing. Our regulations, as you all know, require us to subtract area of the easement. From the area of the lot. If you look closely, you'll see that that's clarified on our summary of the areas. So. We have already subtracted the easement area from the lot area. And currently, number R2R has fee ownership to the middle of Neighborly Way. Right, counselor?
Right.
So I don't know the, your question was anything other than the fact that we own to the, to the middle, so to speak, of Neighborly Way. We've accounted for the loss of land that we have to do to make the lot the right size. And so the the proposed parcel is totally compliant with our regulations as to area and buildable area and frontage.
Okay, I think I was asking more of a kind of a legal aspect because right now that that this, the lot. Uh, uh, under 324. Does not front on Neighborly Way. Neighborly Way is a private right of way. So as part of this establishing a new accessway to Neighborly Way. Would they require approval from the private owners of Neighborly Way to do this?
No, because we're purchasing the, this portion of the property from Sixth Neighborly Way, which already has that.
So by, by purchasing that piece of the property, it comes with the deed on that property.
Right, that, not that we ever intend to use access to Neighborly Way.
Right.
Got it, which we're gonna have you put on the Mylar, yes, and you're gonna put that in the filing and.
Right, so all, all rights of access and egress are granted with the. Transfer of land from, from six to 324. That's what I'm hearing, okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Uh, we request your approval.
Commission, I meant, anything else, but that's okay.
But we're still waiting for ZBA next week, is it, Mr. Hegney?
Well, on the site plan.
Well, see, ZBA, I need to get the preliminary subdivision approved so I can go to the CPA.
But you know, you have this.
We were discussing at the last meeting.
But you know that on our agenda, this is a final.
Yes, yeah, this lot line revision. We, we were looking to have as a final.
Okay.
Which is what we did on doubling road too.
Okeydoke. And then in the public hearing, you've got the. All right.
The next step of our four step process.
All right. If there are no further questions from the Commission, I'm gonna turn it to public comment. Does anybody have comment on this application for a lot line revision at? 328 Palmer Hill Road? Any members of the public? 328. Palmer Hill Road. Nope. Okay, Mr. Hegney, did you want to make any closing comments other than asking us to approve it?
That, that would be it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, so you're asking, you're, you're planning, Mr. Hegney, to have this function as a preliminary?
No, it's the next one is the preliminary.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I got confused too.
Yeah, okay, I thought, yeah, I had it in my mind and then I thought, wait a minute. Um, that doesn't mean, okay.
It's the same process we filed, followed rather, with doubling road where we had, we needed a lot line revision.
Right, okay.
And we got that as a final and then we had the preliminary subdivision.
So Mr. DeAndrea, Mr. DeAndrea, you had a kind of a comment you wanted to make?
I lowered my hand.
All right, okay, good. All right, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, we will close this application. Mr. McRae, would you be willing to give us a motion?
Hmm, let me see what I can do. Okay, this is 328 Palmer Hill Road, Six Neighborly Way, final subdivision, PLPZ 2022. 454. The applicant is seeking to re-subdivide. Convey land between 328 Palmer Hill Road, Palmer Hill Road, Lot 1R, R1. And Sixth Neighborly Way, Lot RZ. Lot 1 decreases from 40,000 to 39,000 square feet. And Lot RZ increases total from 13,389 to 14,270. Then the LBR and LR are 12 zones. The commission finds that this is neither a subdivision or resubdivision. Therefore, motion to approve the subdivision or the application. As provided.
And what about the, the, the notes that we're gonna have, the?
Right, note on the Mylar indicating that. No access to neighbor, no driveway access to Neighborly Way at any time. In perpetuity, would you want to put that?
In perpetuity. They can always change it when they come back. They can always come back and change it, but in the meantime, it's in perpetuity.
Okay, and that.
And then you also wanted the condition.
Right, conditions or notes of the ZBA.
Having approved, that it's having approved.
Well, that's, see, it's kind of a strange thing. If they don't, we don't get a note. If we do, we get a note. So. I guess if we, if ZBA approves. The notion, the motion and conditions of their approval is included on the Mylar as well. Okay, plus the standard notes of subdivision.
Yep, and the box. All right, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. I'm gonna go with the flow here. Mr. Lowe, how do you vote?
I.
Mr. Yesky?
I.
Mr. Levy?
I.
Mr. McRae?
Nay.
And Alpin is I, and with that, the motion passes for one. Okay, now we go to the public hearing. Mr. Bazili, sound check?
Hello, I, you're just fine.
Okeydoke, just making sure you can hear us and I can hear you. Okay. Alrighty, so with that, we now go to the public hearing and our first application in a public hearing is Fred and Duranty Jr. For a preliminary resubdivision to resubdivide a 40,191 square foot property. A contingent upon the previous one at 328 Palmer Hill Road. In the R12 and LBR1. Okey dokey, and with that. Mr. Barilak is seated for Mr. Yesky on this application. Okay, Mr. Hegney, rock and roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Tom Hegney for the applicant. This is the second step in what we were discussing in our prior application. This is a preliminary resubdivision because it's part of an original subdivision that was granted some time ago. Eighties and what we are looking to do here and Pat, if you could bring up the. Presentation material on slide two. We are looking to create a new lot, which is. Outlined in red. outlined in red. Uh, both these parcels would be conforming uh, with the addition of the access way to neighborly way for uh, the existing house lot. And what we are submitting this as a preliminary is because we need to go to the Board of Appeals so that we can use the existing driveway for that house uh, rather than using the access way uh, which is going to be virtually impossible to do to neighborly way. Uh, which, of course, is one of the conditions you had in the approving of the last application. We were at the meeting last time, and there was a question that the commission had regarding how this new lot could be developed. If we could go to the next slide, please, Pat. Uh, Mr. DeAndrea was out at the site, uh, did test holes and found that the ground was, uh, was very appropriate for drainage, a lot of bank run gravel and sand. We are showing a house footprint that is sixty by thirty feet and a driveway coming off the existing driveway that services the other three lots uh, off of Palmer Hill Road. Uh, we have some small retaining walls. Uh, we showed the drainage system uh, and the driveway. Uh, this shows a, uh, green area for the existing house of sixty-four point nine percent. Uh, the zone requires fifty-five percent, and for the proposed parcel, we're showing fifty-nine percent uh, green area. Uh, the house, uh, which is on, uh, the existing parcel uh, is five thousand square feet. And, uh, that parcel being, uh, twenty-three thousand or twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven square feet for zoning purposes would allow for seven thousand, forty-five square feet. So we're well below the floor area uh, that would be permitted on that zone. And of course, with a eighteen hundred square foot footprint as proposed on the new lot, uh, that would be thirty-six hundred square feet, and we would be permitted forty-one hundred square feet. So uh, both would be conforming as to FAR and green space. Uh, Mr. DeAndrea also made sure that the house footprint would meet setbacks as well.
Good for him. The, um, the, the, there's some data missing in what you submitted, as I remember, yes, you didn't include all the zoning statistics, but since this is a prelim, you could just come back when you do final and give it to us.
Yes, we can, and it is also is on the right-hand side of this development plan.
Okay. Um, but that's the comment we have, um, from staff, from Marissa.
And that's fine, because we obviously need to do all of the drainage calculations. Tony has to do a drainage summary report. Uh, we have to, uh, bring that to engineering, and they have to be satisfied, and we have to show them how the driveway works, which uh, we're prepared to do and think that actually this driveway for what would be a total of four houses, uh, is a lot better than what you find on neighborly way.
Did we finally get conservation comments on this, you guys? Because I did not have time to get through all my email today. Did we have conservation comments?
Uh, I don't believe we did.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
No, Madam Chair.
Okey dokey, so.
Of course, those could always be addressed between preliminary and final as well.
Absolutely. I guess, um, so, Mr. McRae, apparently you have some concerns about this. Um, I'm guessing that from something, a vote of yours on a previous application. Would you share your concerns?
Mr. Hegney, I guess, uh, so by creating this, this, uh, the subdivision, uh, you're going to bisect the existing driveway. And that'll actually be completely removed, and there's a retaining wall. Um, I, the, the plan that's in front of us here on the screen, actually, I have, but it's not very clear. Uh, maybe, Mr. De.
If we could blow this up a bit. And then Tony can walk us through the, uh, how the development would work. So you can see the existing driveway, that, that will remain. And it's the parking area that is rather large, where Pat has the cursor, uh, that would be removed and, uh, and a retaining wall located in that area.
How high is that? Do we know?
I can answer that if you put me on.
You're on, Tony.
Okay, thank you. The, um, what we did here, Mr. McRae, was, um, take into account the difference in elevation from the plateau um, um, and the driveway that currently serves the Duranty home. Um, the, the wall between the three twenty-eight and the proposed lot is going to be two feet high, and I show that, um, on the plan on the, um, on the easterly end of the wall, down by the blue wall that's been highlighted near the driveway. You see a top of wall sixty-six, bottom of wall sixty-four. Similar situation up, but then on the westerly end, top of wall was seventy, which is the elevation of the driveway. Um, and then sixty-eight would be the elevation at the lower level. The way we designed this was, if you look at the subdivision map from the prior application, we had physically located the wall. You know, surveying is an accurate location. Then we took the GIS topo and superimposed it and quite, not surprisingly, it fit perfectly. So we have a very good, um, accurate, uh, indication of the land. The eastern side of the, excuse me, northern side of the property in the LBR zone, that's basically original ground from way back when the subdivision was done. And that was a good sign, and we know it's original because it, it, um, uh, blends in very well with dwelling number three, three, four. So when I set out to excavate the test holes, I was quite confident that I was gonna hit good material, and I did. It's bank run gravel. It's original ground. It has very, um, deep soils, so they're ideally suited for the drainage. So then, using, using the top of the wall, which is elevation, uh, sixty, I proposed to walk out on that north westerly end. So we have a walkout in a private area for the family to enjoy. And then the first floor walks out at grade also, um, at the existing elevation, if you will, of sixty-eight. So all of the elevations work very, very well. And the driveway comes in at the same elevation of the existing, um, common driveway. We saved the, uh, decorative retaining walls and the tree, the triple tree with inside that. So it's, uh, as I said before, it is a very good plan. Also of note is that all of the activity is within the R twelve zone, so we don't have any overlapping concern. We're all in the R twelve. And we meet all the setbacks, um, in excess. Also, another key point here is that we took a very conservative approach to the setbacks. We have a rear yard of thirty-five feet and a full thirty-five feet from the, um, north eastern line along the driveway. So it's a very confined building envelope, but complies with all of the regulations.
Okay, so the, the, the blue wall, the existing blue retaining wall, uh, what was the height of that again?
It, um, it, it, uh, the top, the elevation of the top is sixty. And it slopes down to that plateau of the original ground to the east of dwelling three thirty-four. So when, when the, when the Duranty subdivision was originally done, they did some earthwork and created that wall over the top of the sloping topography so that he could have a relatively flat area adjacent to his, his home. Uh, Tom mentioned it, but even by reducing the width of that, we're proposing thirty-five feet um, at the minimum for the back out of the garage. So it's well more than necessary. We often recommend to have twenty-eight to thirty feet. In this case, we have a minimum of thirty-five, and it expands on the, on the westerly side. So, um, there's no diminishment of functionality for the driveway to the existing house. The proposed driveway comes in at grade, and we also have the ability to back out and turn around or park guests all within the, um, the proposed driveway. I must say, it is a good plan.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Laurel, you'd like to add something?
I understand it's a preliminary, Mr. DeAndrea, but are these walls intending to meet the zoning regulations right now with regard to, um?
Grade plane height, yes, sir.
Okay, sir. So the existing and the, and then the proposed will?
You're not penalized for an existing wall. I think we all know that. So the existing wall remains. We're not altering it, and then we step in um, the proper dimensions and then rise at the, you know, the three feet that we're permitted to do.
But I think the separation's still gonna apply to the new wall, right? So, uh, if that hasn't been investigated.
We have, we have, uh, maintained that, um, between the yellow and the blue.
Thank you.
The, I think that the issue, and we'll clarify it with Mr. Couture, but the blue wall is existing, and that's existing ground, and therefore you're able to rise from there in the R twelve to three feet, and that becomes your first grade plane wall. And then we've, um, sloped at the, at the proper slope between walls, and then we have our six-foot envelope um, that follows the sidewalk in the front. So I think it's all, um, compliant, and the heights are the, are correct.
Anything else from the commission? I'm gonna turn to public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to comment on the preliminary subdivision application at three twenty-eight Palmer Hill? Anybody from the public, three twenty-eight Palmer Hill? No. All righty, hello, aren't you early? That being the case, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Or, Mr. Hegney, did you want to make a closing comment? Say no.
No.
All righty.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All righty, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? No objection being seen, we will close this application. Um, going to our next application in the public hearing, Salvatore Guido at one fifty-one Hamilton Avenue in the R six and what was formerly the HRO zone for a final site plan and special permit to retain an existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home in the rear of the property. Is that Mr. Hegney again?
It is.
It is. Okay.
Uh, good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is one that you've seen a few times. Uh, we had a, I, I'd say a healthy discussion at the last meeting, and, uh, uh, I, I wanted to start with going over what happened in two thousand and five when this was rezoned to, to HO. HRO, and, uh, Pat, if you could bring up the, the, uh, most recent material I sent in, or that Emma sent in. And I just wanted to show you when this was zoned HRO that, uh, there was a significant change to the site. And just on slide two. So, um, this is the site plan uh, that was prepared. You can see the existing house, can see the addition that was proposed, and then the entire rear part of the property was turned into, uh, thirteen regular parking spaces and one handicap space. It paves the entire backyard. Uh, the, uh, property also needed to have, it has a ten-foot access way uh, to those eight, those thirteen parking spaces. If we can go to the next one. The, uh, so this shows the addition that was put on as part of this plan. The, um, uh, purpose was to have doctor's offices on two floors, uh, with a half a dozen, uh, exam rooms. And so, uh, that, that's what was approved as part of the rezoning. Uh, was to allow for a substantial commercial medical office with thirteen parking spaces and a completely paved backyard. So that, that, that's, that's what was given as the, as the incentive to retain the front look of the building that is on, at one fifty-one Hamilton Avenue. Uh, and to maintain that, that, uh, that facade. This is an eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one square foot lot in the R six zone. R six zone requires a minimum lot size of seven thousand, five hundred square feet. This would permit a two-family house of six thousand, four hundred and forty-six square feet. Uh, our proposal is to have two single-family lots that would total four thousand, one hundred and five square feet. Uh, the benefit that we receive here from it being in the HO zone is the reduced side yard setbacks. Uh, and to have the second dwelling detached from the, the existing dwelling. Uh, on the, uh, survey, uh, that we, uh, had prepared, uh, the setbacks are a little better, uh, than they were on the sides. That, uh, because the, the, the property tapers to the east or to the right. And we were forty-three feet away from the rear property line with the prior plan. Now we're sixty-two point eight feet away. So we've moved it almost twenty feet closer toward Hamilton Avenue to the west. Uh, we've also, uh, relocated the garage so that the garage doors face north so we don't have to have a greater distance between the, the proposed garage and the dwelling. And of course, we've removed the attached garage that was part of the, the proposal uh, for the, uh, for the proposed dwelling. With the incentives that are currently part of, of the HO zone, uh, we could seek a third dwelling unit, uh, on this property, uh, but we're proposing, uh, just the two. Oh, these are significant changes that we've made. Forget about the, the original plan that was approved. We've made significant changes from what we initially, uh, proposed to you. Not only have we removed the attached garage, we've lowered the roof height, uh, to, by two, uh, point seven five feet. We revised the front facade so that it has a dormer, and, uh, I think, Pat, that is, uh, uh, the next slide after this. Uh, would be the next one after this, Pat. So, uh, the, by having a dormer, uh, along the west or elevation of the front facade, uh, it has the appearance of, uh, one and a half stories rather than the two-story house, uh, that's on Hamilton Avenue. We've taken square footage out of the second floor. We took the square footage of the garage off. Uh, and one of the other advantages and, uh, that we, uh, have is that by moving the house closer, uh, to Hamilton Avenue, uh, the grade plane changes from four point oh five to two point nine. So, uh, we're actually, uh, from a zoning standpoint, the house is shorter, uh, but, uh, we're also now not counting the basement as part of square footage, and the house will appear to be better in the ground uh, than, uh, it was, uh, sitting farther back. So that, uh, we now have eliminated a thousand, four square feet from what's counted as part of, uh, the, uh, the proposed dwelling and the existing dwelling, uh, combined. Uh, we've reduced impervious coverage. Uh, the green space is fifty-five percent versus the thirty-five percent that is required in this zone. Uh, we've resolved issues with sewer department, engineering issues. And actually, we received very positive comments from conservation. And actually, we received very positive comments from conservation on our landscape plan. I'm going to frame this one because I don't get these very often. So we, we think that with the revisions that we have made. And the preservation of the building along Hamilton Avenue, that this is worthy of your support and we request approval.
Alrighty, commission. Wait, Nick, you guys, we never have nothing to say.
Madam Chair, I just had a question. These boxes on the elevation, Mr. Hagney, are these niches or what are, what are these features?
Paul Hopper. I believe is in attendance because I, I know he is traveling but was going to make a point of being available for the meeting. And he can, can answer that.
Alright. And Mr. Hopper, whenever you're ready.
Okay, there I am. Okay. Good evening, members of the commission. Paul Hopper, for the record, I'm the architect for the project. And reaching you from Denver, Colorado in my basement bunker. So I don't have all of my records with me because I am not in the office. But to answer the question in terms of what those rectangles are, they're basically framed panels. This is a north elevation and we wanted to create some detail. But at the same time, not introduce windows on the north elevation. They weren't really necessary for the, the plan, but we just thought in terms of being a good neighbor to enhance the facade. We, we, we added these framed panels. So that's, that's what they are. They're framed panels and stucco.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Harper, can. I don't, I'm not sure I understand these panels. What, can you just describe the material? Any coloring, different differences and how that, how it works? Because I, I just don't understand exactly what it is.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So what, what they are, basically, they are. A continuation in terms of the texture and color of the stucco siding. So it's basically a molding in stucco that is, you know, brought, you know, proud of the stucco surface to create this molding, if you will, in stucco. And then the panel itself is a flat panel, which is, you know, the same material as the rest of the stucco siding. So it's basically, you know, decorative elements. It's not meant to be windows or boarded up windows. It's just meant to be a decorative element to create. You know, break down the scale. So it's not just a plain, you know, facade on that north side in particular. And so it's really, it's stucco, let's call it a stucco molding, if you will, around the rectangle on the outside. And the inside is a stucco which would match the color and texture of the rest of the stucco facade.
Mr. Mr. Leroy, why were you asking about those things?
They, I just didn't see any call out, Madam Chair, and I didn't.
Okay, so you, you knew they weren't windows and you were wondering what it is. Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they were, if they were casement or, or whatever, they just, they're just larger than the other windows also on the facade. So I was just, you know.
There's no zoning issue with it, was what I was asking.
Uh, the only issue would be the proximity of a structure on the neighboring lot and there may be fire protection and that could be a reason too, which. Again, both answers are totally sufficient. I just. Again, Madam Chair, the, the height of them, especially on the second floor up here. Was what asked, made me wonder what exactly they were because again, they don't match the, any other window, you know, heights or whatever.
So what I'd like to ask the commission again. Is the applicant has reduced, Mr. Hagney, tell me again the math. How many square feet did you reduce the second structure now?
A thousand four square feet.
Okay, so they, they've reduced and our key issue. The last time we heard this was that they were building a second structure that was so much larger than the first. He's made. An argument about the size of the lot and how many square feet it's being used. What is your reaction relative to consistency with the HO? Because that's the first thing we really should address.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Address, please.
I think actually there's been a real concerted effort to actually reduce the bulk of the building. Mr. Hopper, appreciate the fact that the roof line has changed and come down. The fact that actually moved closer to the street and that the garage is now more evenly spaced. It leaves a lot more in the backyard according to the most recent landscape plan. And that, you know, would be consistent as if this was an accessory building to the, to the original on the street. Mr. Hopper, I do have actually two things that would like you to consider. One on the west elevation, there's a office window. That kind of is just flying out in the middle of nowhere on the facade. If you could align it with the one above. And if you have an opportunity to take a look at the, the panels that you're providing on the south and north elevations. If they are the same scale as the windows they're adjacent to. As opposed to just panels to break stuff up, I think it might be a little bit more successful.
Yeah, be happy to look at that.
Okay, anybody else have comments?
We got the landscape plan.
Yeah.
Late.
Yes, I was.
Conservation seems to be okay with stuff they've done, but I'm not too sure if they've seen this.
They did see the other landscape plan that we had submitted. I, I just wanted to have a plan that was consistent with the, the survey. And the architectural site plan. So that, that's why I asked Matt Pop to do that today.
And then. So what we could do with that. What we could do with that, what we could do with the landscape plan would be. To, if we were to go ahead with this, we could make it subject to staff and conservation review. The other thing is, we had talked about whether if we were to approve this, whether the HDC would need to come back in. My sense is that what the applicant has done is make it more consistent with the objectives of the HO. HTC was okay the first time. Therefore, they would be happier with this iteration. So I would not recommend sending it back to them.
Right. I think actually in conjunction with that, actually understanding that the, there's. The front building is, is highly detailed with the brick coins, et cetera. Creating the standard, this one actually has. Excuse me, in all respect to Mr. Hopper, lack of detail, which actually makes it again subservient to the front building.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we introduced the brick very sporadically, not sporadically, sparingly, I should say. Just like on the base of the stairs and things like that. We didn't want to copy the, the, you know, the historic building.
Department of the Interior guidelines. So, yeah.
The other thing is the updated declaration that could be, if it's okay with the commission review after the fact also with the law department, which is common.
Yeah, I took that note the last time we talked. I'm not too sure what we have in the file, but I think it has to be updated to reflect what we're seeing.
Well, it has to be, yeah, and, and it has to be updated because it, it's previously an HRO. Okay. Any other comments from the commission regarding six one oh nine regarding the application?
We're okay with the relief of the setback.
Will we give the relief of the setback under six one oh nine, correct?
Right. So, but we have to make sure that we're okay with that. We've got three feet, no, not even four feet on one side and plus or minus two feet on the other.
That's the question. So you, you know, that's why we're asking, are we consistent with six one oh nine here? Are we satisfied that we can give?
Actually, Mr. Mr. Hopper, are you still on?
I, I am.
He's right here.
Quick question about the, the setback to the property lines being so close. The windows that are being proposed on, on those two elevations, are they going to have to be? Wired glass or fire glass because they're right on the line?
Well, they're, they're set back a little bit from the line, but the, basically in terms of the fire code, they don't have to be. And I reviewed this with. Mr. Natali from the fire department and he didn't have any issues.
Okay, I was, I was just saying in terms of building code itself, but okay.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's still the residential code, so it's different from the commercial code.
Okay, I was just concerned about whether those windows would have to change somehow when you got into, if you got into permit phase. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then this is just a minor little technical thing, Madam Chair, but I just want to make sure there's no disagreement that it was like you, as you said, it was approved as an HRO. Just by virtue of the change in the regulation, it became an HO. But so if any future approval or action on this would be as an HO, I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page on that.
Yes.
That's actually good to know. Thank you.
Yes. So it, it, it transitions into an HO because we're changing the site. Previously in HRO, they're actually now transitioning to. But it's not a rezoning because the, this is weird to me that it's not a rezoning from when, because the HRO already existed. I, I'm sure Mr. Hagney has explained that three times now.
Yeah, but that's why I thought it just, it could just be noted as an acknowledgement. And I just want to make, make sure Mr. Hagney didn't have any objection to that. There was just acknowledged that it would be an HO and, and any decision on this site.
No, that, that's proper and appropriate.
So setbacks, you guys, and the size of the building and how it's all looking, any other comments? Because relative to this, to six one oh nine to the HO, do you feel this meets the standards?
I just wanted to understand the, the site a little bit better because, you know, this is, this is still a fairly large building, the building. Your, your, it's being able to access the rear of the property is. Going through kind of a bit of an alleyway, you don't have a lot of space. So. What? I, I assume that, that the rear is, is common space. Is that correct?
That, that would be up to the property owner as to how he wants to, to handle it. We did want to make sure that there was a patio area for use by the house in front. But Mr. Guzzo will have to make that determination.
Okay, so in other words.
As, as the occupant of the house in the rear. He currently occupies the house in the front.
Base, I mean, it will be.
Oh, yeah.
Et cetera, yeah.
Yeah.
So it may not be common space.
Okay, may not be.
Well, in respect that there's, my, there's. Okay, very good.
Alright.
I'm sorry for that confusion, but.
That's good, good, good clarification.
And. I mean, as far as. The, the bulk of it, you know, if you. It's. I'm just looking at the elevations and the plans, so it's, it's a little bit, it's hard to really understand what it's like.
Patrick, do you want to reshare the elevation? Is, I think there's one that has the two fronts. You know, the one that we were looking.
So you, you, I, you know, you, you've. Done a good job of, of, of pushing this into the landscape and you've pushed it back away from. The rear of the property, which is very good. And the, you know, the, this front elevation is. Very softly detailed. Just kind of curious. You have a, a more beautiful. Elevation, south and north as opposed to east and west. So I was just curious about that and, you know, the orientation of the, of, of the side. Seems a little bit more pleasing. The way that it's sculpted on, on, at the end as opposed to the broadside. And why you wouldn't want to kind of accentuate the, the look of it and, and, and enjoy the. The gabeling. But anyway. I think that you've. You've responded very nicely to our comments, I think.
Alright. Commission having no further comments, I take it we can ask for public comment? Mr. Hagney?
Oh, yes, please, Madam Chair.
Does anybody have comments on this application at one fifty one Hamilton Avenue? Mr. Pecora? Hello, Mr. Pecora, if you want mute, you're outside.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we were the ones that got this approved ten, fifteen years ago.
Thought so. You know, I had been trying to remember. It seemed like it was you guys. Okay, go ahead.
So I have a, a question. We, we went for an HO. On that and got it approved, but we didn't go forward with the project. Does that mean that the HO remains?
Say it differently. This was an HRO. We've now changed the regs. We keep the existing historic. Designation, but we convert it to the new regulations to an HO.
Madam Chair, to put it another way, the zone change happens effective immediately. The site plan can expire and did in this instance. So that, that's what happened here, Mr. Pecora.
Okay, thank you for the education. The other thing is, would, shouldn't there be a reason for the setbacks to be? Less than five feet for many reasons, but a few. One, if the neighbor to the left or right wanted to do the same exact thing, you'd be left with. Six feet in between two, two buildings. Like what is the hardship that they need to be with, be within the setbacks? Under the, under every regulation in town? I don't, I don't understand why they have to be less than five feet on the side setback.
It, it's not a question of hardship under the regulation like it would be if this was a variance under the zoning board of appeals because that's not what's before the commission. It's a request for a waiver of the setback, but under the condition that the applicant's trying to show. That makes the site better under the HO and I'll let Mr. Hagney address that. But just from a technical standpoint, it's not a variance like you would think of it with the ZBA. It's, it's a waiver under the HO. But Mr. Hagney, if you want to explain your point of view as to why you're proposing it.
I, I, I understand that you're allowed to approve it. I just don't understand why you would approve it. That the, the, the house, the existing house already exists. They're not going to tear it down. So you don't have to allow such a harsh side setback. I'll end that point on that. The, my other point is, are they going to improve the street's lack of stormwater drainage? And one of the reasons we didn't move forward with our project was because the overflow had to go into the street. And there was no existing stormwater system and we would have had to. Put a, a stormwater system in the road and go all the way down Hamilton Avenue. Which is no different than what was required by the owner of one. Twenty seven Hamilton Avenue recently, they did a two family house and they had to improve the town. Stormwater system so that the overflow would go into it and Chickahominy has no stormwater system to say, to speak of. And it's absolutely needed.
Well, but Mr. Pecora, I'm curious about something. DPW Engineering signed off on the drainage on this. Did you run into a problem with DPW Engineering?
No, when we, when we designed our system, it, it's basically no different than what they're proposing now. Because in fact, it's more harsh because we had a whole underground system underneath the parking lot. They, they have all pervious. Area with the building and there's no place to put the drain. Where is all the stormwater gonna go?
Hold on.
Okay. Was there a change in the regulations?
No, no, the, the, no, not since this was approved. It, oh wait, no, actually, I take it back. The stormwater drainage manual came out. But that wouldn't apply because Mr. Pecora is saying that even before he couldn't meet our stormwater requirements and all we did was get stricter.
Stronger, right.
In two thousand twelve, was it?
Correct.
And the fourteen and then, and then further.
But DPW has signed off with no comment prior to zoning permit.
Right. So two, two things for Mr. Pecora. Section six one oh nine D three, that's the section that actually.
Uh, section six one oh nine D three, that's the section that actually provides, uh, latitude with, uh, from the planning and zoning commission. Uh, to, uh, provide for a lesser, uh, setback. That's part of the HO incentive. Um, and then the drainage system on the map that I have in front of me shows, um, porous asphalt in front of the garage, uh, areas. And that all goes back to, uh, level spreaders in the backyard. Nothing goes out to the street. So it's collected there in between the two buildings and then piped around the two buildings to, uh, uh, to to, um, level spreaders that are buried out or, you know, buried in the backyard, um, in the field, in the meadow.
Well, I hope it, I hope it works. Um, I know that the drain in the back, I, I, I know the property and it's all rock. You know, so there's no place for the water to, to go except downhill. And that's on, uh, old track road. And, and that was the reason that we designed it the way we designed it. You know, um, was to protect from erosion and, and other things, uh, that could affect the houses below us. Um, I just feel like it should be, the street improvement should be made on a project like this. But I have nothing else to say.
Well, what they're, yeah, I hear you, Mr. Pecora. And I, I went back and I looked, I'm looking at, um, what Soundview did. Um, and they So this is kind of interesting. So they've got well, you moved the garage, you, you took out that garage. So they've put, they do have a cul-de-sac system. So if they run into problems installing it, they're going to have to come back and talk to DPW. Right?
Mr. Hegney agrees.
Perhaps, yeah, perhaps the applicant can address their
Yeah. So Mr. Hegney, um, why don't you address these? Because I'm sitting here going back through what Soundview submitted. Um, because it isn't, it, they do, they do have, and they have, and one of the things is that I'm seeing now is that they have this impervious, um, an impervious liner that they had put in, but I'm not sure that they need it anymore with the new plan. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Well, they have pervious pavement. They have the cul-de-sac units, uh, where they are, uh, controlling a, a peak runoff, uh, on the site. So that it does not impact, uh, budding property owners, which is part of what, uh, the engineer has to certify. And what my client is the owner of the property has to record on the land records as a declaration uh, to maintain the drainage system. And if it does come to the, uh, the attention of the public works department that there is, uh, an impact to any budding property owner, the town can force my client, uh, to address that issue. But the, uh, the public works department has found the drainage summary report acceptable. Uh, Bob Smarslak, our engineer at Soundview, uh, is certainly, uh, experienced and skilled in designing these systems. Uh, and he will also supervise, uh, the installation, uh, and be able to certify its installation at the time we seek a certificate of occupancy.
I just feel, I just feel like any, any major development in Chickahominy should also include improving the infrastructure of Chickahominy. But, uh, you know, that's what we end up doing all the time.
All right. Um, okay. And then you had the question on the setbacks, which, um, uh, we had raised, uh, as well. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pecora. And there's nothing else, right?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, are, uh, anybody else in the public wish to speak on one fifty-one Hamilton? Nobody else in the public. Um, there's, there's something troubling me, Mr. Hegney. Um, and I, maybe it's a question and, and I'll move on after that for Mr. Hopper as well. Um, if I look at the east elevation of the new building, why does it look like it has two entry doors on the, on the east elevation? Mr. Hopper? Um, you want to share that, uh, those elevations again?
If you look at that.
And, um, I can't get to the plans right now. Fifty-two, how far deep? How did I miss them? Are they in the beginning?
Uh, it's, it's slide thirteen on the presentation material that we revised for today.
It's like a two-family house elevation.
It looks like a two-family house elevation and there are Nick, did you mention yesterday that there are two flights of stairs inside?
Yeah, there's one, Mr. Hopper, if I'm correct, there's one that actually exits a bedroom. And there's one that exits, um, uh, living room.
Are you talking about the stairs to the outside?
Yeah, that's in the back, the back
Right.
Back of the building. There's two, two flights of stairs from first floor.
Right. There are two, there are two stoops out of the, we'll call it the rear yard, which is the east elevation. Uh, one, uh, exits the master bedroom. Uh, so, uh, you know, so the client can walk to the outside from their bedroom. Uh, the other, uh, is from the dining room. So, uh, again, one's a kind of a private space, uh, the master bedroom. The other is a more public space, uh, which is the dining room. Uh, so there are two ways to get to the, uh, backyard, uh, from, uh, that east elevation of the house.
All right. So let's just go through this again. Somebody
Stop, stop right there. Hold on.
All right. That's exactly the one I'm looking at. Go, go.
Zoom in to the middle, uh, floor plan. Right where your cursor is zooming there. Okay. So on the left-hand side, we have a master bedroom and a stair out to the backyard. And on the right-hand side, there's a dining room with a stair out to the backyard.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, if you go to, uh, thirteen, Mr. Laurel. Uh, yes, the east elevation there in the lower left-hand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So on the right-hand side of that Now you're making me dizzy.
Oh, you're, oh, no, that's only me. You can say that to when I'm doing that stuff.
Okay. So, uh, east, okay, east elevation. On the left of this elevation is the stair out of the living room?
Dining room.
Dining room. Okay. Same thing. Uh, and then on the right is the stair out of the bedroom.
The master bedroom. That's correct.
Yep. Uh, are they, that stair out of the bedroom, that's required for egress. There's no window there, right? There's no window in that room?
That, 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 that solves the egress problem, having a, a door. Yeah.
The door instead of a window. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, but why don't we just have a window? It, this is very uncomfortable because this looks like a two-family house. Okay, you guys, I'm just saying. I didn't register it over the weekend, but I'm looking at this and it looks like a two-family house with two flights of stairs. It's very
Madam Chair, this is the rear elevation though. This is
Rear elevation.
Yeah, this is facing the, the backyard.
Doesn't matter. My point is it looks like a two-family house from the back.
Oh, but
Yes.
Nobody's going to see the back.
Doesn't matter. My point is they've got it laid out so you can convert it to a two-family house without any problem.
So the, my, the, Mr. McRae pointed that out, Madam Chair. There's no window on this wall here. So this bedroom needs a window.
So it can have a window.
No, well, no, the, having a window that you need to egress out of, it solves the, it, it solves two purposes. It's egress and, uh, a window, right?
Then, well, I don't know what to tell you guys, but if you look at that floor plan, it looks like you could convert it to a two-family house pretty darn easily.
Well, that would require your approval too, Madam Chair.
No, it would not. I'm saying you get it done and then you end up with a two-family house before you even know what happened.
As I see, as I see it to be equit, equitably, this, you know, have this, this in half. You'd have a major redesign of the building.
Yeah.
Um, and I think going, you know, trying to putting in, uh, another stair for a second, a second, uh, ex, you know, a second unit upstairs. You'd have to compromise the first floor immensely.
But I think that Margarita is saying that you don't have to necessarily divide it any which way. You have an office, uh, a bathroom and a master bedroom. Uh, and a closet area.
Exactly.
And that in itself
Could be converted.
Up a dwelling unit. So you don't have to divide the house, the, this, uh, uh, structure in half in order to have two units.
Exactly. That's exactly what I was saying. So I'm just uncomfortable with the way you guys did it. Because you know, we don't have enough zoning enforcement to know if somebody decides, you know, to just change it without saying anything. And I find that two staircases in a, what is it? Two thousand square foot house is quite odd. So I don't mind so much the exit as the fact, you've also got two internal staircases, right?
No, there's only one.
Only one internal stair. Okay. Because you could use the downstairs. So I don't like that left-hand side. It's exactly what Peter Levy said. I'm no architect, but I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that this could become some sort of illegal unit without any huge effort.
Now, uh, a couple of things. One, it's, uh, th- this isn't the speculative, a speculative design. This is the house that Mr. Giselle wants to build for himself. And this is how he has, uh, been discussing it with, with, uh, Mr. Hopper as part of the design. So, secondly, um, whether you have a staircase there or not, I don't think creates, uh, an apartment. And you cannot assume, and the law is very clear on this, you cannot assume a zoning violation.
I know that, Mr. Hegney, but I just, I just really really wish you didn't have it with the two separate stairs, the two separate entrances. Um, I realized that, um, that you haven't created a zoning violation, but I think you're setting up to, you could have a setup to do one and Mr. Giselle may not always be the owner. And we certainly, didn't we have a multi-family use in the front originally as well?
That, that was some time ago. It currently is being used as a single-family house and, and
All right. Okay. I'm not going to make any further comment on this. Um, does anybody else have any comment on this application at this time?
Just a quick question. Mr. Hopper, are you still on?
Yes, he's still here. You're having trouble seeing everybody on the screen?
I'm having trouble seeing, uh, just a quick, quick question. Second floor stair goes up. That just, that's a walk up into the attic above.
Yeah, it's a very minimal attic. It's really going to be storage and HVAC up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And was there a question about parking?
Oh, yes, we were going to discuss that. Go ahead, Mary.
Uh, I was going to say that the question was raised whether there was adequate space for four vehicles. And I think we had even asked for dimensional parking, uh, drawing, and it may have come in this afternoon. I didn't get a chance to look at all the material that was delivered today.
I think it's, um, Mary.
Is it in?
Patrick, you're frozen.
Oh, he moved somewhere. Patrick, you're gone. You may have to leave the meeting. Um, does anybody else know the answer to the question? Mr., Mr., uh, does anybody know whether we got that? It's excellent.
Um, I don't believe we got a particular count, but just to verify, Mr. Hegney, we have two in the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And then two, two outside the garage on either side.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. So that's four. Are we supposed to have five?
Five.
And I was thinking about that, uh, because that did come up as part of the discussion.
Briefing. We discussed it at the briefing yesterday.
And
Thank you, Mary.
Just under section six dash one fifty-five, uh, sub-paragraph one. Uh, the two or more family houses can have tandem parking spaces uh, permitted that serve an individual unit. And in looking at our, uh, uh, survey, uh, we could have two cars parked in front of the, uh, proposed dwelling.
But you're not a two-family house. I thought we just did that and you insisted that you weren't.
Uh, it says dwelling or groups of dwellings to accommodate two or more families. Doesn't say in a two-family house. And perhaps I didn't say it properly before.
You didn't say it properly.
Mr. Hegney, thank you for correcting.
Mr. Hegney, can you, I, I'm, I'm confused as to what you just said. There's, where would the, where would the tandem spaces be?
Uh, on the right-hand side of the proposed garage.
As if I was facing the front door of, the door of the garage.
Either there, or I was thinking to the right-hand side of the garage or toward the, that you could fit two cars in there.
Mr. Hegney, is it, um, is it accurate that, um, that, that this parking plan had not been provided before yesterday? And it was, uh, it surfaced yesterday and, um, this, this is the nature of the response we're getting right now.
Uh, we had shown in the previous plans, uh, uh, two, two-car garages. And, um, uh, we didn't have additional parking then, but parking could have been accommodated in front of the garages. Uh, when, when you have two dwellings under section six dash one fifty-five, you're, uh, able to do that. And, uh, to provide the five spaces, uh, we can accommodate it through a tandem parking uh, between the proposed garage and the proposed dwelling.
I, I, I understand that, but you haven't provided, you haven't provided us with any, uh, drawing or plan indicating that. Is that correct?
No, since, since that came up as part of the discussion yesterday, we were able to revise the survey. Uh, but not the, uh, site plan, uh, by our engineer. But we can certainly provide that as part of, uh, uh, proceeding to, uh, zoning permit.
Okay. So you're saying that between the existing dwelling and the garage, you have tandem parking? Or is it between the proposed dwelling and the garage?
Between the proposed dwelling and the garage.
Okay. So I have one in, one in the garage and two outside that are tandem.
Right. And tandem was part of what was permitted when you amended the regulations in two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Hegy, Hegney, is it, uh, Mr., is it Mr. Giselle's intention to use the garage with the rear unit or the, the existing unit?
What, one for each?
Okay.
So is it five? Sorry. Go ahead.
So I think if, if there was a resolution, uh, to this tonight, I think, uh, it would have to be in a way that would understand that, uh, the tenants can operate it separately. So, uh, to put it another way, the tenant A is blocking their own parking spaces and tenant B is blocking their spaces so that we don't have a, um, you know, a, a tenant squabble.
And that, that's how we would anticipate it operating. Yes.
But just to be clear, so there are, um, each unit would have a garage space and an adjacent uh, outdoor space. And then the tandem space would be outside of that, uh, those areas. So it would be either in front of the garage door or in front of, uh, the outdoor space. Or behind the outdoor space.
Uh, on the, would be the east side or right side of the, of the two-car garage. Yes.
That's the tandem or that's one space? Cause it's a two-car garage and then is it two in between the garage and the dwelling or one?
It would be one, one tan, there would be a, uh, uh, one space and a tandem space behind it on the right-hand side of the proposed garage that would be for the benefit of the proposed dwelling. So it's not blocking any of the cars that would be associated with the existing dwelling.
So as we see it here, uh, if I drove in from the driveway, I'd go to the back of the garage and park. The second car would come in and go to, you know, park that car in that, and actually in the front yard or the front driveway area of the proposed dwelling. So that's two. And the third one is in the garage. And then four and five, or is one in the garage, one outside for the existing dwelling.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know how tight that is, but, um, I understand it. I just, the, the, the tandem car seems like it's going to be um, you know, it would more, more likely be perpendicular to the exterior, I mean, to the, the outdoor, the other, um, car that's, uh, on the outside of the garage.
Yeah. I, I would add, isn't this a material consideration, uh,
Yeah.
For this, and I, um, I feel like it's something it contributes to additional discussion by us and questions if.
But the problem is this is a must-close tonight and the maximum extension has been granted. So we are in a yay or nay situation on this.
And, and I would add that if you condition this upon having five parking spaces, one being a tandem space that it has to work, we would have our engineer design that as part of submitting it for the sign-off in order to file for our zoning permit. So the process is that once you make a decision, you provide us with a decision letter. It has certain requirements. We have to go back to our engineer, sometimes our architect as well, and they have to address those particular conditions. That then gets submitted to your staff. We don't get to the the zoning permit stage and the building permit stage until your staff is satisfied it has met the conditions of your approval letter. And they create what I call a zoning permit, permit sign-off letter.
Thank you.
And that is what, and that, and that's how you control what is done after you make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hegney. All right, you guys. So here, here we have it and it's gonna, if we were to go forward with this, it would have a series of conditions on it. You have the HO issue and there's a, and you've, you've got the landscaping plan you want to review. We're saying, Katie, we're saying. I mean, they could convert to preliminary, obviously. That's an option. The, go ahead, Katie, the drainage.
I mean, just to Mr. Lowe's point, Mr. Hegney, can you state on the record that those tandem parking spaces have enough room to back out and turn without interfering with the other spaces? I mean, that's, Mr. Lowe's point is, what's the distance there? You haven't really shown that adequately. So I, I, I think, Mr. Lowe, so.
You know, I, I find this frustrating that we're having to kind of struggle with this. And also with a gun to our head to, you know, approve it or deny it or whatever. And here we are at the eleventh hour. That's my frustration.
So we have in that area over forty feet of distance. So there's more than enough room to have two cars fit in that space on the right-hand side of the proposed garage.
I think maybe what Mr. Low is probably getting at is that actually you have forty feet to get to put two cars, but it's the maneuvering to get into the forty feet of two cars. Especially if they're tandem, in, in so many words, they'd actually be parallel spaces against the curb of the, of the, of the parking area.
Okay, so he's representing that they can do this. We're going to have to make this long list of conditions of things they would have to do if we were to move forward with it. The other option we have is asking the applicant if he would consider converting to a preliminary and getting the the HO issued, you know, that, that it done. The, the new drainage plan, the drainage plan has not been reviewed and, and it consistent with the change in the, in the, in the design of the house, correct?
Yes, but we've reduced the impervious coverage.
Reduce the impervious.
Five hundred square feet.
But you don't actually have, but you don't actually have a sign-off on this plan.
On a plan that is less than what was approved before.
I understand that, Mr. Hegney. Then we don't have conservation. It, we have a landscape plan that not everybody's looked at. What other, when we have the planning, that the parking that needs to be verified that it works. I think that's it, right? Those four big ones. Does anybody, did I miss something, you guys?
No, with zoning, sewer said that they were okay. Same, same engineering is prior to permit. You know, that kind of stuff.
All right. So everybody's okay except for those things. And so with that, we had no further public comment. I would ask if if what, we have no choice. If Mr. Hegney doesn't want to convert to a preliminary, we could we could close this and decide it then tonight. So does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
I think we can, we can look at this and provide notes to an approval if we seem that we want to move this forward. So I have no issues about.
Okay.
The, the notion of a conversion to preliminary was rejected by Mr. Hegney.
He is banking on us approving it with conditions is his gamble.
And I think that's an appropriate way that you've handled it many other times. And I, I don't believe there are any issues here that can't be resolved by us addressing them between your decision letter and our construction documents that we would submit to staff.
Okeydoke. All right. So there's being no objection to it being closed at this time. We will close it and move on. Does anybody object to closing it? Please speak now. Forever hold your peace. Okay, we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Hegney again?
Not me.
Oh, good. Oh, wait, it's another Mr. Hegney. All right. So wait, Mr. Hegney, don't leave just yet. I'm going to bring up this, Mr. Hegney. And then I have an apology to make to everybody. Mary Jenkins, don't go away. Come back. Okay, I have an apology to make to everybody. I completely forgot to announce our new commissioner. I was so nervous about the hospital. I completely forgot to announce. We have a brand new victim. We have fresh blood on planning and zoning. Her name is Mary Jenkins and this, she was effective the first of November. He's already been to several meetings with us. Everybody has met her and I apologize. Welcome, Mary. We don't offer therapy, but we know that you're one of the loony people. And I hope you enjoy being with us. And so, so some people have already.
It's been a wonderful experience so far and the two years that I was watching, but not, not a member.
He beat me, by the way, you guys. I only watched for a year.
So. Our, our, our and I would like to, to welcome Mary to the, to the Union of Permanent P and Z Newbies. It's a, it's, it's an austere, it's a, it's an august brotherhood.
No, wait. Yaski is the chair of that one. So, you know, don't forget him.
But we can still welcome.
Yeah, yeah. Yaski played, Yaski played the newbie card for like four years.
Yeah, this is the ultimate.
Thank you, thank you.
As a newbie, I, I welcome you, Mary.
Thank you, Dennis.
As a former newbie, I welcome you.
You've never been a newbie, Levy. You're like, they didn't have running water when you and I came on the commission.
Mary, Mary, just to say from not a newbie, okay, just welcome in. What were you thinking?
Well, she certainly had an informed decision. Okay, here you guys go. L and M Orchard Street, LLC for a final site plan and special permit for a two-unit residential building on a seven thousand sixty-three square foot parcel at twenty-five Orchard Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Welcome, Ms. Jenkins. John Hegney for the applicant, L and M Orchard LLC. We are here to review a special permit application with you for a three thousand eight hundred and forty-three square foot two-family home in R six zone. And we are here because our property is undersized. For any property under seven thousand five hundred square feet, you need a special permit in order to create a two-family home. You did see this before. I hope everyone was paying attention. I know everyone here is new, so I'm happy to explain anything for all of the newbies. But this was last before you in February for pre-application review. The commission did have a series of comments that I believe we've addressed in our, our application materials that I'd like to go through with you. For starters, we are looking for additional screening to our neighbors to the north. Our clients did meet with the, the Carinos, the property owners to the north, which also have a two-family home at twenty-seven and twenty-seven A Orchard Street. And they've agreed to install a five-foot fence along that northerly property line. If you look at our site development plan, you'll see that is where we are planning to install our new driveway that will serve both units. Twenty-seven Orchard Street also has a driveway along that common property line. So in terms of screening, a fence is the most appropriate response here for everyone involved. Secondly, you asked, could we take a look at some of the trees that we're looking to remove? And we, we did do that. And then we are going to be able to preserve the existing maple at the rear of the property. We are removing two other trees as part of this project. A dogwood and another maple elsewhere on the property. We're planning on replacing that with a flowering tree, a flowering cherry tree, excuse me, a crab apple tree and another dogwood tree.
Mr. Hegney, if I may, how, how big is that maple that you're removing?
The maple that we're removing is we did look at that earlier today, Mr. Lowe. So is, it's a rather substantial tree. Is a little larger than the twenty-inch caliber maple that we are preserving. Unfortunately, it sits directly in the middle of the site and is where the middle of our building footprint is going to be. So it would be very difficult to redevelop the site while preserving that tree. We do believe that the trees that we're replacing that with are sufficient to meet conservation's standards. And then we're happy to revisit that with the commission or with them if anyone has any questions. We are also, as part of the commission's direction and in the pre-application process, enhancing the front yard landscape. If you take a look at the properties along the east side of Orchard Street in this portion of the, of Cos Cob, you'll see that all of them carry a white picket fence. We will be installing a similar white picket fence approximately four feet in height along that front property line to extend the look throughout the neighborhood.
Mr. Hegney, stop right there?
Sure.
Okay, so following your thoughts about the streetscape, to use a term I'm not supposed to use anymore. The adjacent properties don't have parking in the front yard. And we had a proposal in front of us that says parking in the front yard. I'm kind of confused because I'm, can't, I don't understand or can't get a relationship of where your front yard is and the street is. And I've been looking at kind of street view, the plans, the landscape plans, the existing plan, and it just seems that it, even though the building is being pushed back, I have a more of an encroachment into the street with the parking and just a little bit of planted area in front.
So it, it's a relatively a unique portion of Orchard Street here, Mr. MacRae.
Yes.
Orchard is an undersized right-of-way. So it requires us to push all of the development back in our lot beyond what the normal standard setback for the R six zone would be. If you look at the other properties in between Bible Street and Valley on this stretch of Orchard, you'll see that all of them are positioned more closely to the road than what we're proposing. In these situations.
All of those, all of those lots, as I see it right now, do not have parking in the front yard. It's all landscaped and like you said, picket fences.
That, that's true. And, and we are landscaping that front yard as well. We will have a private hedge beyond the picket fence, which will screen any front yard parking that occurs. I will say that, you know, we are providing garage spaces. So it's not necessarily going to be used at any given time. But, you know, we're providing those spaces in order to comply with the, the regulations for multifamily homes six one fifty-five.
Because it, the regulation reads dwellings with three or more bedrooms, one garage space for each dwelling and one point six outdoor spaces for each dwelling. So that's actually, and we would not round up here too. So it would be three point six plus the two. So I'm sorry, three point two plus the two. So it's five point two spaces. But we, but they're giving us five.
That's true. You know, I would say that, you know, typically in these situations, the Planning and Zoning Commission has rounded down. I think I could echo my father here on the last application.
Your father actually misstated our regulations, so I would not echo him.
Well, I, I would say that if the commission was concerned about available parking on site, tandem parking could be available in front of the rear garage so that there would be plenty of parking available to keep in accordance with six one fifty-four, which says all residential uses have to keep all of their parking off the street and on their site.
Correct.
So we have one in the garage, detached garage. One of the garages attached. And then where are the others again?
So we actually have two, Mr. MacRae, let me, I happen to send over the plan unless Mr. Leroux has it handy of our site development plan.
Yeah, Mr. Leroux, can you, can you bring up? Yeah, the ZLS is actually probably the clearest.
I do believe that our engineer, Brian Muller, does have the, the parking spaces dimensioned on his site development plan. So I did provide that expert excerpt to Pat.
It's on the site development plan.
So this is the zoning location survey. We're going to have two spaces. Like I said, Brian Muller did dimension those on his site development plan. But the two will go in front, just below where it says proposed driveway. You have the one garage space just to the right of that. Just to the right of the garage label, you're going to have another space just beyond, behind the building in between the window wells there. And then you have your fifth space in the proposed garage at the rear of the property.
Okay, two in a garage, two in the front, and where was the fifth one again?
In the other garage.
So there's two in the front, two in garages, and then one in between the window wells, just behind the garage in that space that Mr. Leroux is highlighting.
Okey dokey.
The alcove here, Mr. MacRae.
Got it. I see it on Mr. Muller's plan here.
Mr. Hegney, it seems like there's an opportunity to run all of the cars back behind the building and not have asphalt in the front yard.
You know, Mr. Levy.
Do you consider that?
You know, we looked at that as part of the initial plan that we brought to you for pre-application. One of the things that we did in between that plan and this plan was adjust the, the location of the garage to decrease the amount of paving that we were looking for, opening up the lawn area in the rear. We do believe that this is a, a good plan for the site because of the way the units are oriented. You have the front unit or one unit completely in the front of the structure and then the rear unit and completely in the rear. So you do get to have the parking allocated to each unit pretty well under this layout.
But I'm confused about something. Are the zoning enforcement officers' comments not valid anymore? He's saying you don't have enough of a setback.
So we did look at that with Mr. Couture.
But he hasn't changed his comments, Mr. Hegney, if you have convinced him otherwise.
I believe we got updates.
I believe we did get an update, but.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
Nick, did you get? I have it. Yes. Okay, this was dated today. And he's actually endorsed it for zoning permit sign-off.
So he's okay with where the garage is now?
Right. And it's my understanding, and look at the revised ZLS. It's actually behind the building.
Yes.
The primary building, and it's taking advantage of the non-conforming setbacks that the garage or existing garage, excuse me, already has.
That's correct, Mr. MacRae.
Right. It's no, it's no closer to the setbacks.
Oh, okay. So that's why we were talking yesterday about where the, where the plane was. Okay.
Right. Mr. Leroux, if you can zoom in there real quick.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, we, we, we had a discussion with Jody with his original comments to understand where it could go to make it comply without seeking variances. So his interpretation is this facade is parallel to the rear yard. This is the rear plane. So if the garage proposed was behind that and also no closer than the existing accessory building, then they could make use of the non-conforming accessory location and then also still comply with the regulations.
And that is the, the change that we made here. If you took a look at the plan that we had on file previously, the garage was located. Uh, previously, the garage was located closer to Orchard Street. Uh, we relocated to this location in order to get uh, Mr. Couture's support.
I believe also, Mr. Hegney, the building was a bit longer, like twenty-four feet or something like that.
Uh, that's also correct, Mr. Leroy. We did shrink that as well.
Right. I'm assuming that the proposed garage is for one car?
Uh, it is, Mr. Levy.
Uh, so, so if it were for two cars, you could get rid of the garage in front. And have three uh, parallel. Uh, perpendicular parking spaces on the side there. Uh, and then uh, no longer need the parking in the front.
Mr. Levy, I, I think the difficulty that we would have uh, in pursuing that, uh, we would, would require substantial change to the existing residents. Um, uh, you know, as uh, Mr. Leroy noted. Uh, uh, we're really squeezing uh, any sort of detached garage that we can in the structure to uh, still qualifies as an accessory structure in the rear yard. And uh, work within the existing legal non-conformities that we're benefiting from, from the existing garage. So it doesn't leave us a lot of wiggle room uh, to expand this building.
Uh, Mr. Levy, as I see it.
You could reconfigure it.
No, actually, if you rotated the, if you rotated the garage or a structure back there. Uh, so it's actually between the rear plan of the building and the rear yard setback for accessory structure. You'd still only get the width of, enough width for a one-car garage. It's not, it's, there's not enough room back there at all. Yeah, Mr. Leroy, if you can zoom in right there, you know, the backyard, behind the uh. Um, the backyard of the, where the garage is, it's that width between the two setbacks, the accessory setback and the. Building's envelope itself, that's not, it's not wide enough to get a two-car garage into.
Well, you could turn it on it uh, so that it's uh, parallel to that back. To the uh.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. If you rotated it so it's parallel, if it's between the two setbacks, it still wouldn't be wide enough for a two-car garage.
As, as Mr. McCray is pointing out, that's only a twenty-foot difference between the rear yard setback for standard structures and a five-foot setback. For accessory structures in the rear yard. It's not, not a lot of room to play with, and part of that is why we're coming to you for a special permit because of the lack of law area that we have. Um, we are trying to make uh, this work as best we can, and we do believe that uh, we found a, an outline that works.
Well, um, I think trying to get the uh. The parking out of the front would be a very nice attribute to this.
Yeah, Mr. Levy, I, I, I would, I would agree with you. Uh, you know, uh, the one thing I would say though. And you know, it's funny when looking at Orchard Street and uh, is that this is actually a section of Orchard Street where people are permitted to park on the street. And so uh, essentially uh.
But then there's six one fifty four, so I wouldn't like, whatever Orchard Street is allowing people to do is fine. We're gonna focus on just our regulations and not what on the police department and the parking services people do.
Well, you know, it is the town charter, Madam Chair, you know, I, I would just say, you know, it, they're, they're supposed to walk hand in hand.
Oh, God, here we go again. Mr. Hegney. We're following the zoning regulations here, okay?
Certainly, Madam Chair.
Okay, so back we go. We're trying to work this out. Folks, as you look at this, this is one where you got some wiggle room. I know Mr. Hegney would love to see it approved and. But this is only a must-open tonight, so you've got, if you guys have something that you think works better in the neighborhood. Let Mr. Hegney know.
Okay, so this is what I'd like to do. Uh, Mr. Leroy, if you can zoom in on the front yard of this right here on the ZLS. Yeah, zooming close there. Um, I'm having a hard time trying to understand the relationship of the building. Um, to the paved street. And the only real reference is that there's a telephone pole there. And that seems to actually be in the street. And I think what it is, is that everybody has concerns with the parking in the front yard. And I think there has to be a real concerted effort to take a look at how that's going to be worked out in relationship to, one, the traveled way. And the front of the new building. Cause as I see it on the street, I see, as I see it on the street view in front of me. The, there's really no definition between. That the yard and the road. There's a, you know, it's just a painted line, but they bleed one into each other, so I'm having a hard time. Understanding where your planted area is in relationship to that. So maybe a suggestion is, is on the ZLS or on the development plan, specifically maybe even actually on the landscape plan. Is show how that works. Show, if you can, show where the painted lines are, so we have a reference to that. Because right now, it would seem as I'm driving up, as I'm driving up um. Orchard Street. This, this planted area. Is, may, may, almost, it almost feel like it juts out into the street. Do you know what I mean?
Um, I, I, I can understand the concern, Mr. McCray. Uh, what I would say is that I do believe our landscape plan, it does address your concerns.
No, no, no. My concern is, I, I don't know where your landscape plan is, is in relationship to the traveled way. The front of the building, those kind of things. It's there, it's shown on the property line, but I don't know where that, that is in reality. And I, what I'm asking is that the, the ZLS or the development plan. Show more detail so I can know where that actual, that planted area is in relationship to everything else.
Sure, okay. Uh, you know, uh, that's certainly something we can look into.
So as I said, if it can get it in relationship to, one is the telephone pole I see, but. You know, maybe take this landscape plan and superimpose it on top of. The uh, the ZLS. Uh, show where that telephone pole is, so we know where it is on the landscape plan. Um, if you can actually locate those that, you know, that they traveled way. The painted lines even, you know, as a reference. Because I can't, I can't see it, and it's, it just seems to me, like I said, as you come up Orchard. All of this, everything is all set back. And now, are we gonna have something that's this planted area being, you know, poking out into the street?
I think that if you uh, uh, drive by the site, I think you'll see that there is a curbing out there.
No, I'm looking at there, there's no curbing. I'm looking at the front of the property right now on street view, there's no curbing. So, Mr. Hegney, go back to Mr. Muller, have him revise it so we can see what's going on. Work with the landscape designer and the, the. Uh, and the engineer, Mr. Muller, and actually get something out of plans so we can actually really understand where this planted area is.
I'm happy to do that, uh, Mr. McCray. I will tell you, we do have an approval from uh, DPW Engineering here. I'm sure we could make those additions as part of a zoning permit sign-off process if the commission was interested.
Okay, now, I'm actually looking at the department comments from engineering. Okay, and Mr. Marucci's, I think is actually kind of saying the same thing. The, the fourth page, fifth page. Okay, he's got a photograph, the street view, and he's got questions about where the edge of pavement of lawn, the edge of road. The traveling, so on and so forth. He's got the same kind of questions. So he's gonna be asking for this when you guys resubmit for.
Zoning permit.
So.
And, and, and that would be a standard part of any application process, so.
So, rather than, why don't you get it to us first, so we can take a peek at it, and then you'll be all set and ready to go when you go back in.
Uh, Mr. McCray, I'd be happy to do that. I do worry that, you know, we might not be uh, using the commission's time as, as effectively as you might like. Um, uh, if that is your only concern, I would tell you that we have a project here that does meet the special permit standards. Uh, we're not adversely affecting the neighborhood. Uh, this is a permitted use in the zone. There is another two-family home uh, just to the north of us. Um, uh, if we're talking about details, details are important, and, and we should absolutely get that dusted up before we get any permits to do this project. But I, I don't know if it's necessarily something that we need to have uh, outlined on the plan uh, before we get site plan approval.
Mr. McCray?
Uh, thank you for your opinion, Mr. Hegney. Um, how I waste my time is actually probably my business or the business of the commission. Please revise the plan and bring it back as soon as you can. Thank you.
I, I, I also would like to see it. I spent some time just this, as we were talking on the, on the Google Earth, and. And I can see the point. When we're looking at, at how. That front yard parking would look especially, I would like to see it designed the way Mr. McCray has said, has laid out, so we could just see it.
Now, I, I don't want to make, minimize Mr. McCray's point in any way. Uh, we can absolutely do that. I do think it's important. Uh, the only uh, question I would have is the timing, and if it's something that the commission would prefer to see upfront. That's certainly something our design team is more than capable of.
I for one would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, and so we're gonna let Mr. McCray decide how we waste our time. I think that's a good one. And we're gonna write that one, Nick, write that one down in the book.
Okay.
That's the book of, okay, oh, Mary, we have a book of, Nick is the keeper of the, of the, of the expressions of the commission that are in perpetuity. And now we have a new one, that Nick is the decider of how we waste our time. Okay.
I'd like to see that book sometime.
Yeah, well, it has a lot of history. I mean, what was the one, it has to be, it has a little Cos Cabby, or we haven't said that in a long time. Does anybody have, go ahead, Mr. Low.
I just wanted to say one thing, uh, notwithstanding uh, Nick's comment, um. I'd like to look at the glass half-full and, and reserve the right to remind Mr. Hegney at a later date. Uh, about wasting our time.
Mr. Low, it's not a waste of time if, uh, if you.
Before we take this to another meeting, just asking you guys. Does anybody have any other comments on this application that they would like to share?
Um, wait a minute, just, I want to make sure, could we pull my notes back out again?
Because we should give guidance, yeah, and I'm going.
Okay, so we.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
No, I, I don't want to interrupt Nick.
Well, Nick is, Nick is looking.
Okay.
We're good with CEO, we're good with sewer. Uh, engineering head comment. Um, I think it was, it was at the, yeah, revised landscape plan back to conservation, probably.
Yeah, and the neighbors, um, the screening, okay, my notes are that we talked about the screening for the neighbors. Um, native planting, um, Jackie was asking us for native planting on the landscaping. Um, and we were waiting for the sewer acknowledgement, but I guess it came in today?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, Mr. Low.
Yeah, my question was, uh, what, what are the materials of this five-foot fence that's providing this screening to the north?
Uh, it's planned to be a stockade fence. We can certainly get you more details if, if we're uh, coming back to you, and happy to do that.
No, that's fine. I just was curious. It wasn't said. Okay.
On the two-family, you can ask for this kind of detail because you're in a special permit situation and you're looking for, you're looking on this one because it's an undersized property. So you are in a situation. Um, where you can ask for more detail about the impact on the neighborhood. Okay.
Mr. Hegney, um, also your landscaping plan, uh, staff has some comments about some of the native plantings that you have chosen, though. Uh, if you haven't received them, we'll send them over and you can address those as well.
I appreciate that, Mr. Leroy. I, I, I do realize that we do have a landscape architect specialist uh, looking over our shoulder here, and uh. I will certainly address any of her comments as well.
Okey dokey. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney, and with that, I'm gonna turn just quickly to the public. Do we have any comment? On twenty-five Orchard Street, please raise your virtual hand. Any comment on twenty-five Orchard Street? You have no comments. Okay, we will um, continue this application, then we will leave it open.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hegney. All right, and with that, um, you guys, um, just telling you, we have one application left, two discussion items, and. Two decisions, two decisions maybe. Do you guys want to?
Two decisions?
Um, hold on.
From the items that we've already discussed, Mr. McCray.
From the items that we've already discussed, do you want to take a break at seven after we do Bailey Wick? Do you want to take a break now? What do you want to do?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay, there are people who are asking for a break as well, so that's why I was, um, we're not just gonna go through till we finish. Because there is, well, you don't want to encourage anybody to be uncomfortable. So, um. We will take a quick break at some point. We don't have to take the full dinner. Um, so you guys want to do one more and then take a quick break?
Sure.
Okey doke. All right, we're gonna do Bailey Wick Club then for a final site plan and special permit to modify their special permit conditions. Uh, to, to allow lighting on the, over their platform tennis court and to change the hours of operation. And with that, hello, Ms. Klowberg.
Hello, hello, yes, Melissa Klowberg for the applicant. I'm joined by uh, Mr. Rudy Ridberg, the architect on the project, and Brian Bellina. Who is the current president of Bailey Wick Club. Uh, we represent the applicant Bailey Wick Club in connection with this application to add lights to their paddle tennis courts and extend the hours of operation during the paddle season. To ten PM. As you will recall, we were here before you in October of twenty twenty-one over a year ago. For the pre-application review. At that time, you asked that we proceed to be heard by the ARC. Since that pre-application hearing, we have been working toward getting the photometrics for the proposed lighting to be in compliance with the restrictions provided in the regulations. We succeeded in that, and Mr. Ridberg presented our application before the ARC. Rudy was successful, our application was approved, and now we are finally back to you for final approval. So this all brings to mind my favorite movie. I would wager you have all seen this movie, even the chairman. The movie is The Wizard of Oz. In the movie, if you will recall, Dorothy and her newfound friends approached the wizard to ask him to grant their wishes. I'll call this their preliminary application. Each had a different wish, but the wizard said he would grant their wishes if they brought him the broom of the wicked witch. Well, after much difficulty, picture the wicked witch melting. Dorothy and her friends returned the wizard, to the wizard with the broom. I'll call this their final application. They had accomplished what the wizard asked. The wizard heard their appeal, but to no avail, the wizard wasn't really a wizard after all, and did not have the power or authority to grant their wish. Like in the movie, we approached you, the commission, a year ago to grant our application. You said, go to the ARC and make the photometrics meet the regulations and come back to us. After much effort, no witches were melted. We did as you asked. The ARC has approved our application, and now we are back before you. Unlike the wizard, you do have the power and authority to grant our request. We asked that the lights be permitted, much like the area clubs shown on the spreadsheet we provided at page twenty-one of the staff report. Until ten PM, at which time they will be programmed to shut down. We are only asking for what the other clubs have. We have also provided a letter from the adjoining property owner at sixty-four Angeles stating that he does not object to the lights. We also received another letter from another neighbor this afternoon, also on Angeles, who also is in support of the application. The photometrics show the lighting will be in compliance with the regulations, and the ARC has approved our application. Um, I'd like to hand it over to Rudy, Mr. Ridberg. Um, he has more technical information that will be necessary for you. So, um, perhaps if you could recognize, Mr. Ridberg?
There he is.
Okay, who is on the phone?
Okay.
Wait a second, Mr. Ridberg, who's the person on the phone that we have in the meeting now?
Maybe that's, um. Patrick, Brian Bellina?
Patrick, who did you let into the meeting who's on the phone? Well, somebody let him in. It wasn't me.
I did not advance this person. I only advanced Rudy.
Okay, well, somebody just didn't. Okay, the number, oh, they're gone. That was a Zoom bomber. I don't know how he got in.
Wow.
Okay, I have no idea how that person got in. Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Ridberg, you were starting to talk, and your, your screen, I think, is turned around.
Oh, boy, how did that happen? Oh, you know what?
Oh, you've got something behind your computer. There you go.
It takes me a little while with this new technology.
Yeah, we know.
I need my grand, I need my grandkids to help me. Apologize. Anyway, welcome. Good to see everybody tonight. Rudy Ridberg for the applicant. Uh, thank you, Melissa, for the introduction. Yeah, we went to ARC in, I believe it was June of this year, uh, had a successful outcome. So if Pat, if you wouldn't, Pat, are you handling the um, the screen with the, with the documents that I, I could request that you show? A couple of them?
I can do that.
Okay, can you go to um, screen number, uh, number forty-seven of the sixty-five? It's an aerial of the property. I thought I'd just give a little context first of what's there.
I mean, you know, you, Mr. Ridberg, you weren't with us yesterday. You know, we've been staring at Google Earth on this, on exactly what your site looks like. Um, we know exactly where the paddle tennis court is. We know exactly. I made them all nauseous touring them on. Um, we know exactly where the paddle tennis court is. We know exactly. I made them all nauseous touring them on Google Earth around the around the cul-de-sac. So if that's what you're showing people, we've all got, I don't think, did anybody miss the briefing yesterday? Now, Baralek did, but he can fake it.
Okay, well, then just quickly then.
Yes, just go quickly.
As you can see from the aerial, the the site is that we're talking about for the three paddle courts are pretty well hidden at the southerly side of the property. You've got the Glen Ridge Shopping Center quite a ways away, fully wooded. There's a, there's a pond on the westerly side. The nearest neighbors, fifty two and fifty six Angeles Drive that Melissa mentioned, both are supporting the application. You're about one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy five feet to Mr. Lawrence's house from the first paddle court. Do we need to look at the photographs that we imported into the into the system? Are you all familiar with the?
If you want to show us one, go ahead. You know what? Here's our big concern. You're asking, I really need to address Ms. Klowberg on this. So you're asking us to change the regulate, the special permit conditions so that you can be illuminated until ten o'clock at night. You can have illumination till ten o'clock at night.
Yes.
Um, we've seen all of these things get lit, kind of hate what it does if there's houses nearby, because even if you don't have, even if there isn't spillage, it's still this bright light out ahead of you shielding. And I'm sure Mr. Ridberg is a great architect who will appropriately shield these lights, which Parks and Rec did not do in town. Shielding them would be an answer, but the biggest question we have for you is what's the impact on the neighboring properties? That's what we got obsessed with yesterday. And Ms. Klowberg, you heard us, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's let's just, well, let's jump to the chase. So going to ARC, which is what you required of us, we need to be point one at the at the site. We went back several times to the designer of the lighting and the calculations of the photometrics. And I told them that we needed to be at point one or zero. Now, to your point, yes, they are shielded. They are pointing down tremendously differently than normally you would have. So you, if you looked at the photometrics photos that we sent and the and the demand and the counts, we are at zero at the at the property line and we're fairly close to the property line on the on the southerly side. So if you look at that, that that we are at zero and I we're probably less than twenty feet to the property line. They did ask at at ARC if we could go from six fixtures to four. And I, at that evening, I also stated to ARC, which they then agreed to or heard me, is that if you go from six to four, you're going to need to add more, more, more lumens and output, which will get it more glare. So if you look at the majority of the paddle courts that are built in town in the other municipalities around which the list that Melissa gave you, they always ninety five percent or almost hundred percent have six of these fixtures. Riley Platform is one of the larger ones that has done most of these projects in our area. And, you know, as I said, I spent quite a lot of time getting them to get the photometrics to work. And then we have the, if we want to look at the, where's my other note here about the neighbors we had? This is again, a seasonal situation. The lights will be on until 10:00 PM, which is what everybody else has at all the other clubs, bar maybe one or two. So I don't think we're asking for anything other than what the other clubs in town have, and they're all in residential zones as well. And I think some of them are not as are closer to the tennis courts than what we have here. We did have a neighbor up on up on the Bailey Wick Hill ask on who's ARC member. And she asked about the lighting and I said, look, we meet the regulations. She's about seven hundred and fifty feet away, but they are above the above the tree line. So they will look down and see this. But again, the lighting is down. It'd be like any any other pole like that you would see that's below. There's no way to block their view. But they're so far away. I think at the end of the day, she agreed that she was accepting of it, which is what ARC did. Let's see if there's anything else.
Well, you have a letter of support from one of the neighbors that.
We have two letters of support from the two most fifty two and fifty six.
Angeles.
And and I think they're supporting it. And I think there is, let me just say the shielding you've asked us to look at. And we are having shields on this and we are focusing this down as much as possible, still giving them good light. And ten o'clock is the time that everybody else has been turning it off. We would like to keep that. And we discussed the result, reducing number of fixtures, six to four. We don't feel that's the right thing to do.
Five times.
I'm sorry, Mr. Baralek, you said something?
No, I didn't ask.
Oh, you said something about.
Mr. Yaski did. Could we not repeat five times the same thing? Isn't the issue here, let's open it up for public and see if there's other neighbors that have an objection?
I think I think the basic question we had is, is there intrusion on the on the neighbors? That's the key thing that we have to answer here. Mr. Rudy Ridberg has addressed that. Do I have anybody from the public who wishes to speak?
May I just ask for clarification before we talk to the public?
There's nobody from the public, I don't think, anyway.
Okay. You currently have no lighting at all on those courts? No. At any point. And will the lighting be on between April first and September thirtieth, but be turned off at eight thirty? Is that?
No.
So the ten o'clock.
Paddle courts are winter use.
Okay, so there's, there will not be lights on, except during.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I realized that the the, I think the approval did allow for eight thirty, but we've never discussed lights beyond the paddle season.
Okay, so it is literally just those months that you're.
November till April, October to April.
Okay, that was just for my clarification. It was not clear to me. Thank you.
Okay, again, anybody from the public wish to speak on 12 Duncan Drive, Bailey Wick Club adding lights for their platform tennis court? No comments. Okay, all right. And I'm gathering from what Mr. Yaski said that he's satisfied and has no more questions.
Well, no.
No.
Now, I was interested to see what if there are other neighbors objecting. You've got two supporting. So that answers my first question.
Okay.
I guess I'm concerned that this is like a creep in the town. I live really close to some of these and it seems to be creeping that we have more of them. And we say the light fits regulations, but we all know that that doesn't exactly work all the time. So I was curious to see if there's any other neighbors. I'm concerned about this, but I'm ready to go and close it.
We could probably talk about, we, you know, look, if we have a problem with it, we could shorten their hours in the future. And I don't know if that's a way we could condition it since it's a special permit, but it seems like if we get neighbor complaints, Katie, jump in.
Yeah, not not really. That that, I mean, once you've made the finding under a special permit that you think it complies with the standards of the special permit, it's difficult to retract that.
To go back and say, oh, we made a mistake. It doesn't really comply. Okay, makes sense. Okay. All right. So there it is. That's the question we talked about yesterday. There's creep. I believe somebody said yesterday, all the clubs are doing it. And there's more and more, there's, you know, a lot of these uses. Where do we draw the line and how do we protect neighborhoods and also enable people to have fun? Any other thoughts?
I, to sort of follow up on what Mr. Yaski said and also what I mentioned yesterday. In defense of this application, I think that, you know, it's it's a little late for us to be throwing down restrictions when when the norm has been set. And and I don't, I'm not someone who believes that, oh, well, everybody else does it. But in fact, everybody else does do it. And and we're not, I mean, are we, is there any evidence, maybe the staff can tell us, of of complaints coming in from neighbors of other clubs concerning lighting on paddle tennis during the winter months?
So I can't speak to lighting specifically off the top of my head, but I do know, I think the field club was the latest one that had paddle court situation where.
It was noise. We talked about this, right? Yeah, noise. Yeah.
Yeah, we we don't really get complaints, you know, which is good. However, most of the clubs have pretty substantial landscape screening, evergreen landscape screening. So, you know, as it turns out, you've got two, the two closest neighbors not objecting, but that is something that one could perceive, you know, that one could anticipate might be an issue down the road if someone else moves in. So I mean, are there any landscape trees being proposed in that area that would grow up, you know, and and provide that screening down the road?
If you looked at the photographs, if you want to look at those, there's quite a lot of evergreens there. There is some deciduous trees. But there's a couple of very large evergreens on the on the cul-de-sac, because between us, between the tennis court paddle courts and the homes on Angeles, there's a cul-de-sac as well. And when you drive around the cul-de-sac, you know, there's two or three large, I don't know if they're Norway spruce, but they're evergreens.
Right. I mean, I didn't see a wall of evergreen screening, though. I know what you're, we looked.
No, it's not a wall.
Yeah, we looked at it in quite a bit of detail yesterday. So there's a smattering of trees here and there, but there's not like a nice big shields. I mean, I don't know if there's so many of the commissions, even in Arbiviti along the edge of the paddle tennis court might be would be helpful.
I think if you walk the site, you'll see that there's quite a lot of vegetation there. Again, some of it's deciduous, but I I believe the club would be, it would be, I'm speaking for the club here, but I believe that they felt that there was need for additional landscaping. They could certainly look into it. I don't think it's necessary. And as we said, we they brought it up to the two neighbors that are there. And, you know, with whatever deciduous trees they have there now, they'll view this courts in the in the winter time. And they didn't have any problem with it.
Mr. Yaski.
So, Mr. Ridberg, is that a no? You're that?
No, on what?
The club is not going to install any additional landscaping?
No, I'm just saying, I said that the club would consider it. I mean, if that you want to make that a condition of the approval, if somebody would like to come over there we can discuss looking at additional landscaping. I think if you walk the site, you'll see, we didn't think there was any need for any additional, because the only place it is would be the easterly side. The southerly side is is five hundred square feet of, you know, five, five hundred feet of trees going down to Glenville. And on the left side, you have trees and you have houses way up on hill that are probably seven hundred and fifty to a thousand feet away. So I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that if you want to make that a condition of the permit, that additional trees or screening may be necessary.
I like that.
Me too.
I like that.
It sounded like a no to me, so I would like to add that.
Yeah, I I value, yeah, I like that. And and that way, we don't have to change it later. We've left it in there that if we encounter a problem, you will figure out how to solve it. The complaints, as Patrick mentioned, the complaints that I hear are the park in my neighborhood, Mr. Ridberg, I mentioned this to you when you came in originally. It's the lack of shielding of the shields and also frankly, the noise and the noise is from the is from the darn pickleball. And it's quite noisy and people have been very unhappy, but there's a cluster of houses right around those courts.
Right.
So I think you've addressed it. I think that's a good way to special to to address the special permit issue. Any other comments?
Well, just the nice thing about, the nice thing about paddle is 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 nothing like Pickle in terms of the noise. So it's much more muffled. And I mean, I personally feel there's a frequency issue here, as we talked about before. And, you know, Bailey Wick needs to be treated the same as all the other great clubs in town, in my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All righty.
Mr. Yaski, I think was trying to speak.
Sorry, Mr. Yaski. And was that your hand, Mr. Low, or were you just?
It was a finger. Yes.
Okay, so Yaski then Low.
No, I agree with treating the clubs, but I think the noise is a major issue. So I think in the future, for the record, I think we need to take a stronger look and send the message that if the clubs are going to continue to expand this, and they do, that they're going to encounter some resistance from the commission. Let's put it that way. And and it's like, you just creep is the kind of thing that if you don't send a message back, it just keeps happening.
Well, and the other thing is that, you know, everybody talks about dark skies. And when you put these lights out there, you know, you're, you are lighting, you're doing more illumination out often in in sort of wildlife situations. You know, we discourage a lot of outdoor lighting all over town just because of that. And that here we are. So at some point, we'll have to tackle it, I think, is what you're saying, and I agree with you.
Okay.
All right, okay. Seeing no public comment, seeing no further questions from the commission? Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot, Mr. Low.
This is not important, but I, back to Ms. Klowberg and I, just for the record, if I don't know what the analogy you were trying to make was, but if you remember.
We're the wizard. We're the wizard.
If if you remember the confrontation with a wizard, I'm hoping that you you don't, you're not suggesting that we are a bad commission, because we're really a very good commission. It's just that some of our regulations are bad.
Well, that's, that, you should say that. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I think it was a terrible analogy, because the wizard is a fake. And I don't think we're fakes. I took.
Well, but the wizard was accused by Dorothy, the wizard was accused by Dorothy for being a very bad man. And his response was, no, I'm a very good man. I'm just a terrible wizard.
I think, Ms. Klowberg, for the future, you need to bear in mind that these guys watch The Wizard of Oz at least once a week.
Or Lisa up on their American les, geez, holy moly. I think Mrs. Klowberg would acknowledge that we are good wizards.
Okay, yes, you have to, yeah, say, repeat after us. Okey doke. So we're going to close this application if you guys don't object in your wizardly ways. Okay, no objection to closing this application at this time. Thank you very much, Ms. Klowberg and Mr. Ridberg.
Thank you. Have a great night. Great Thanksgiving.
All right, I, and I'm going to move Brian Ballenoff because he was with them, right? Okay, guys, how about a real quickie just to do a, you know, yeah, just ten minutes. It's seven oh seven, so seven seventeen?
So we have two breaks. We have one now and then in an hour we do dinner. Let's talk about.
No, we're going home in an hour.
Oh, okay, I got it. Thanks.
We're done for the night in an hour.
Got it.
Well, wait, hold on a second. So what, friends postpone, right? So we we can skip that. All we have is discussion items, right?
All we have is discussion items and the two and the three decisions. Okay, so we'll be done hopefully quickly, but some people would like a nature break.
Seven twenty.
We are now up to seven twenty, you guys. If you keep talking, it's going to stop.
Thank you.
Bye.
Tom, Mr. Ridberg, Rudy's last name is Ridberg, R I D B E R G.
Oh, I've known him for a million years.
Oh, good. Okay, I just, I I try to spell their names and I forgot. I didn't get to it quick enough, so I.
No, I probably have been working with him since the late eighties.
Okay.
I'm done, right?
Uh, yeah. Oh, you know what? You are. This is best.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, have a good night.
You too. See you next next time.
Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Marguerite, I sent Mr. Basili on.
Dennis, you're going to go away?
I'm going away. I have to close my video down. And I'll hear you when you're going back.
Yeah, you can listen. You just mute and shut down.
Bye.
Mr. Yaski will be recusing as he has a conflict of interest. Okay, Mr. Cohen, with that, we're going to go to the discussion items and Mr. Basili did leave, right? Yeah.
Do we have somebody assigned to this to replace?
We don't vote on it. There's no record and we don't vote, so we're all all eight, all seven of us can now bother Mr. Cohen, which he's looking forward to. Greenwich Country Day School for a pre-application review. Now, this is in theory to discuss a lot line revision, but as we discussed yesterday, he's looking for broader input.
Correct. It's in addition to the.
Oh, and twenty minutes, I, the commission has made me promise that on every pre-app, I will ask you guys to please try to stick to the twenty minutes and to not let the attorneys push me around.
Excuse me, sorry.
Did you laugh, Mr. Cohen?
No, I snorted. Thank you. I I do represent Greenwich Country Day School and essentially this is an application. Thank you. I, I do represent Greenwich Country Day School and essentially this is an application, um. Primarily for the purpose of, uh, enlarging their existing, uh, gym to a. Full-size or regulation-sized gym on their main campus at four oh one oh Church Street. The reason that we start out with a lot line revision, which I'll get into a little bit, is because. Uh, for the, we are maxed out. The school is maxed out in terms of FAR. In fact, their current FAR, which is somewhat shy of the present, uh, FAR requirements. Uh, is legally non-conforming just because it goes back, uh, a long time. So our goal here was to enlarge this gym. Uh, which adds about 10,000 square feet of FAR to the campus without exceeding that, uh, that limitation. Uh, and for that purpose, there is an adjacent piece of property that we would, uh, do an exchange with. That we, I, I will show you will provide most of that missing FAR. Uh, to enable this to take place, uh, if, if you all approve. Uh, so let, and I did listen in yesterday to the briefing session and I heard the questions and I'll try to deal with them quickly and, uh. In, uh, in that order, uh, this is a, uh. Yeah, this is, uh, aerial of the entire, uh, four oh one oh Church Road campus. Uh, it's got about thirty-three and a half acres in total. Right across the street is the so-called Schwartz Campus with another. Forty-one acres, uh, that the school, uh, uses as a part of its, um. Uh, educational, uh, efforts, uh, for things like staff housing. Um, uh, child daycare and, um, and playing fields. Uh, within the, um, uh, yellow outline of the campus. Uh, you'll see almost in the center of the campus, outlined slightly in red. The, the existing gym that is proposed to be enlarged. And so. But I'd like to get into first, because it seemed to be first in your thinking yesterday, uh, was the lot line revision. Uh, yeah, okay, so, uh, I. There's the campus. The campus is all shown in one color, either pink or yellow, whatever that turned out to be. Uh, there is a parcel next door to us, uh, that's shown in blue. It's, uh, it is not a part of the campus. It's owned, uh, by a separate entity. And the proposal is to do an exchange of that parcel with the parse, that piece of. The, um, uh, school's campus, which is shown al- almost next door to it. Uh, in outline. And so the next, uh, image will show you the after, if we do this, uh. Uh, exchange. Now, the reason that the exchange is important is because there is a very large house. That sits on the campus right now and it is, it takes up a lot, well, about seventy-five hundred square feet. Of FAR and our goal is to add the vacant land, which was in that little piece to the, um. Uh, to this, the south, yeah, to the south and instead. Uh, put the, uh, the, that large house, which has been occupied now over the years as a single-family residence. Within the blue area, which will be a legally configured, uh, lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen, uh, sorry to interrupt, but i- is that property, is that number fifty? Fairfield? That, that one you said has a large house on it?
No, I think it looks like fifty, forty-eight.
Is it forty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, as I'm looking at it close up, it's forty-eight.
Is part of the campus and it will be transferred to the blue piece. It still will retain its mailing address, which happens to be forty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just.
So actually, that's a pretty good blow-up, uh, Pat. Uh, the, the effect of doing that and the reason that we're doing that is essentially. To move that big house off the campus where it's taking up so much of the FAR and still being able to retain it. As a single-family, uh, residence on a legal one-acre lot. And so, in other words, this will be the after. Now, the, the reason that we're telling you all this. Is to be able to acquire enough FAR within the campus to stay, to, to keep our present FAR. Uh, legal non-conformity, um, i- in, in a, in a, a effect. Uh, the next, to, now perhaps you may have some questions about this before I go on to talk about the gym itself, but. That's the reason for this, um, exchange. It's a little confusing because really the goal of it is to, is to get that. House and its FAR off of the main campus.
You know, Mr. Cohen, I, I, I know, I know that, um, I may not prevail with you, but trying again. I think we really want to focus giving you the very general feedback and concerns. Uh, have you asked us key questions? And then the general feedback and concerns that we have about where you're gonna go forward with, with the gym. Um, you heard what the commission said yesterday, but I'd like them to just elaborate and have you answer. You know what, what our key worries are every time. And we understand, of course. That the private schools, as well as the public schools, all have to improve their offering and be competitive, et cetera, and offer excellent education. Um, but we still have to protect the town. So if you wouldn't mind not doing too much site plan. And just letting us get to those big issues. I think Mr. Brody is here, Adam Brody, I'm sorry, I called you Brody. Mr. Brody is here and he could answer a couple of those questions as well. I'd like to go there if it's okay with you.
It certainly is.
Great. So does anybody want to ask, and is there anything that people feel that they missed from the fact from that, that they're doing this gym? And where it's gonna be? I mean, you see it, you know what, because all of this we're gonna see in a site plan and get to pick on it. Oh, that's a, yeah, that is a good one.
One, one, one quick question. So, Mr. Cohen, the, uh, the cop, the Cooper Smith prop, I think, I think that was the name of it, but, um. The copper smith, the, the mom and the big house.
Copperthwaite.
Copperthwaite. Close. Um, so that never got incorporated into like a, a school use, is that correct?
Not all of the property, no. Uh, a part of it did, uh, some time ago. But the, and the house was, is incorporated, uh, within the campus, which is our problem.
Okay, and so the new piece that you're requiring, um, so all, the entire thing will be part of. The Greenwich Country Day School. So is Greenwich Country Day School going to be increasing land area then as a result of this? Or will there still be a parcel that's, that's not, the, the land area won't, won't change? Just the FAR will change because you won't have the house on, on the said land area, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
That's correct, yeah.
So when you, so when this, um, so that's something to think about just when you come in, just presenting. Which pieces are part of the campus and which are not?
Uh, okay, all right. But actually, on the very, uh, the first image that Pat shared. Uh, we tried to indicate if they are in, no, the other one, oh, next one, next one. Yeah, the, the campus, uh, what's included within the Greenwich Country Day School campus is shown in pink, let's call it. All, all of the pink. The blue is not a part of the campus, not owned by Greenwich Country, Greenwich Country Day School.
But it will be obviously as a result of this proposal, correct?
As, as exactly, as a result of this proposal, Pat, the next one will show. Where the, there you go. So now, uh, the, the proposal will, in effect. Provide the lot lines so as to put that house on the blue parcel and the, what used to be that piece on the left or the south. Uh, incorporated within the, uh, the school's.
Okay.
And this is.
Mr. Cohen, to put it another way, oh, sorry, sorry to smack, right? Uh, to put it another way.
Go ahead.
Is, is the yellow or the, or the pink that you're calling in this image here, is this the boundary of the special permit? Or, or is this, or, and then the blue would be the, the boundary that would remain, uh, residentially, uh, zoned or?
Exactly. Exactly correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cohen, this is actually just, it, it has nothing really to do with the land as much as excluding the house for FAR purposes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And this was a, a way of doing it, uh, and still retaining that house, uh, on a separate one-acre person.
Okay, just one thing before we move on to site plan issues. Um, when you come back, uh, I just wanted assurances that that, that odd shape is, uh. Yeah, compliant with zoning?
Yes. Uh, we'll, we believe it is and, but we'll, we'll verify that. So, uh, uh, we're, we've gotten a little bit to the plan here, um, uh. Pat, this, uh, I think is the first, uh, image and it. Shows, uh. The west elevation of before and after. Before is on top, after is below, which shows the. Enlarged gymnasium building. Uh, the next image, Pat, shows, uh, the east elevation. Again, before and after, and the final, that we have, uh, shows, uh, what it's gonna look like from the. Uh, so, uh, a, an enlargement of the, uh, of the gym building, and that is the purpose of it. Uh, there are a couple of plans that show that as well. The first plan. Uh, I think before that, yeah. The first plan shows, uh, that portion of the building that's, uh, going to be demolished, which essentially is the existing gym. And the next one shows it getting bigger. And that's the full extent of our, uh, our plan. Um, uh, uh, issues that we raised, uh, at, uh, the briefing yesterday involved, uh. The use of the gym and that's important and we certainly will address that. Um, this very specifically when we come back, uh, but, but, uh, let me tell you a couple of things which, uh. And if you would like to pursue this with, uh, Adam Brody, as, as you pointed out, Ms. Alba, he's on the line. Um, first of all, the, the gym is only available for use by Greenwich Country Day School students. Uh, they currently use it for middle school and for, uh, their high school. The high school, as you know, is located. At the, uh, Stanwych Campus. Uh, they only use the, uh, gym for both, uh, practice and games. After the end of school hours, beginning at, uh, four thirty and ending at, uh, seven, uh, o'clock. Uh, there is no intended outside use, uh, to be made, uh, of it. It's, it's going to be used that way. Uh, and, and one of the questions that came up, uh, yesterday had to do with, um, our, uh, assessing, uh. Traffic and, uh, you will recall when, uh, the approval was granted for the high school. Uh, the commission placed a condition of, that, to the effect that. Uh, when the, uh, school reached its, uh, reached eighty-five percent of its permitted capacity. Uh, it would provide additional traffic studies, uh, in effect comparing our projections to what's going on. We have not quite reached eighty-five, uh, percent, but we're so close that we've, the school has authorized that study to be done. And we will present it with our final application. So we are re-analyzing, uh, each of the study. Uh, i- intersections and impacting, uh, examining the impact of, uh, uh, school traffic back and forth. Uh, and I believe that's one of the issues that, uh.
It's a huge issue for us and we joke about the Yogi Bear factor, you know, nobody, you know, nobody goes there because it's so crowded and everything what you. Uh, we're really worried about, and we, we said this to you the last time when you were looking at doing the high school and you, we, we've been talking about in. And moving people around, moving the kids back and forth, the traffic involved in that. If there's whatever you guys can do. To reduce that back and forth is critical to the commission, especially as you look. At the level of service in some of those intersections in that neighborhood, they get, um, and I'm doing this from memory, Mr. Cohen. From the last time you were before us, there were a couple that were quite disappointing. When we extended the intersections that we looked at. Does anybody else remember if that's kind of how it went?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so i- i- and it, it serves you all in the long term if we press on this because. You want people to feel that this is a good place to live and they want to move here to put their kids in Greenwich Country Day, right? So. Um, it, I, and I think Mr. Brody absolutely understands that from when we've talked to him. All right, um. Uh, what else do we want to ask you? What, do you want us to give you any guidance? Um, I mean, we want you to have the zoning and the FAR. To get it to where it works, um, and allows you to do these things. What else does the commission concerned about traffic? Busting kids around?
Yeah, I think it was that, uh, understanding. All of the, uh, back and forth that we talked about between these campuses, the two campuses. You know, the kids are running up and down Stanway Road, back and forth and back and forth. I really need to get my, uh, mind wrapped around how that's gonna work. How that's, how this is going to affect that. Um, um, I'd like to know, it, it's my understanding that, uh, it's going to be NCAA regulation size. Um, kind of expand on that, you know, do you have?
Because the high school was gonna use it, um, for basketball, right?
Okay, does it need to be NCAA regulation size for high school, so on and so forth? Uh, I think Mr. Cohen already said it's just for use of the school. Uh, I need to get, uh, some information about tournament play, so on and so forth, you know, uh. In terms of actually who's gonna be using this after hours, you know, are we having games here, um, training, so on and so forth? Um. What else do we have? Uh, I guess demolition of part of the gym is coming out for the new one. That's what I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Cohen?
Correct.
Yes.
And I guess also, you know, are there weekend games? There's a just Monday through Friday. Number one and the number two. Uh, Greenwich Country Day as a summer camp, would they also plan on using the gym during the summers? Is this just during the school year?
And, and, oh yeah, it's a great, great question. So is any kind of proposed summer use? The other thing is coming back to Nick's point about tournaments. I, we know, I mean, I mean, we're, we're real people sometimes. Um, we know that if you're in high school on a basketball team, you're gonna have tournaments, hopefully, if you play well. But the question is, can you just time the tournaments so that you don't have, you don't, in that you're not doing it at traffic peak hours? Um, in the area, so you work around it. And we understand you gotta run a school, but can we, can we lessen? The burden on the neighborhood? Uh, and we're gonna just keep asking, that's always our concern. Uh, we believe that Greenwich Country Day runs a great school. Don't tell anybody we said that. All the schools here, I think we have great schools in, in town in general, including our public schools. You run a great school, but we're worried always about that. Anything else, you guys? Mr. Levy?
Oh, well, it is an awfully large building. I was just curious, uh, how much you may or may not see from below from. Um, on the other side of the property, uh, going down the hill.
I don't think very much, Peter. Uh, we'll, we'll give you that information when we come back, but as you could see from that aerial, this, uh. Building happens to be just about in the center of the campus, so it's, uh, it's pretty well shielded, but, uh. That, that's a good point and we'll, we'll, uh, bring it out.
Very good.
A quick question for Mr. Brody. Is, is there a gym on the Stanwych Campus? I know there was a performing arts center, but I don't remember a gym.
There is not, but, but if you'd like to hear that from Mr. Brody, you can.
Well, now that, yeah, there is no, there's no athletic facilities up there, all, all of the.
Uh, there are training rooms and, you know, things for different athletic facilities, but is there a basketball-sized gym? Or even a mini basketball-sized gym? I don't believe so. Adam, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
But there was just that large performing arts center approved.
There he is, looking good.
Hi, hi, guys.
Before you, before you get going, I just wanted to ask, uh. Uh, maybe you could comment on, on, you know, the, the location of this. Um, new facility, whether, you know, that, uh, this is going to be used by the other campus more so. It's, um, and, um, and how. You think that this is a better location for this facility as opposed to having it. Um, in a more residential area further up on Stanwych, uh, that might be a good thing to, to comment on.
Uh, Adam, would you like to respond?
Sure, I'll be very quick because I know chairperson Alvin wants to keep us in the time and, um. I do want to stay, start by saying thank you for all the work you do and Katie, don't leave us. Please ever stay with us forever. Now, with that being said, I would just say a couple of quick thoughts. Number one, there's very no, there's no change in usage here, folks. We are running our varsity basketball program out of the current gymnasiums. All we're doing is upgrading the facility. So the tournaments, the practices, the number of cars, the. So the tournaments, the practices, the number of cars, the busing, that's all been in place. It's been in place for the last two years, and and you'll be able to see what's happened for the course of this winter, as we once again will be running our high school basketball program out of this um facility.
Yeah, Mr. Rhodey, my my point was that uh yes, but but uh in some respects, you know, a high school would have its own facility, and it doesn't. So I just wanted you to kind of refresh for us the decision not to put something up there. Why is it better down here?
We would love to, but we have no space at the
Yeah, you were hoping you would be able to buy more land, but that has not worked out.
We we continue to scour the market and and our our neighbors are
All right.
Just to answer your question on the court size, um our court is actually non-conforming to play high school basketball. We we've kind of got in a waiver from the F A A to play on it, but the N C A A sized court is what is necessary to play high school basketball. Um so that's the need for the enlargement of the court.
Okay, well, that was, okay, well, that helped. That's very helpful to us. Because you we're helping you. Okay, so your whole point is to come into alignment with, and we talked about this, as I remember when you came in two years ago, um as we're going to give you frequent flyer points for um how many times you're before us. But um when you came in, you you said you were gonna make do for a while till you worked it out, and now you're moving forward with this. Okay.
And and just to refresh your memory, we continue to bus the children between the two campuses, so our seniors are not jumping in their cars and driving down Stanway Road to come to practice here.
Yeah.
Run shuttle buses.
Yeah, and we just, it just, gosh, we wish you weren't doing that, and I mean, we talked about it, so we'll leave it. Okay, does anybody else have any more comments?
Just just one comment uh that Adam, you know better than I do, Country Day has done an incredible job on energy efficiency with your new buildings, and hopefully you'll continue that with this, because I think gyms are pretty big energy users, and you're going to have a huge roof, and maybe that'd be ideal for, you know, uh solar panels or or and other things. So thank you.
In the works, Mr. Wild.
Okay, anything else? All right, y'all, seven forty-six P M, and you have a whole evening ahead of you.
Thank you.
They do. They they have a whole evening ahead of them. Mr. Yesky. All right, Mr. Yesky, come back. All right, Mr. Yesky, you can come back. But we will start with our discussion item on a hundred field point circle, uh which is a pre-app um uh to discuss basically a major remodeling and uh some additions. I thought we had decided not to do pre-apps on residential. No, we didn't.
No, we did decide that. Didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is a, this one is real. This is a double whammy. This is coastal and set special permit.
Okay, I mean, yes, okay, I just suddenly remembered that as I was looking at Mr. Tessie's face that, okay. All right, Mr. Tessie, less than twenty minutes. Um what are your key questions? And we'll give you some big picture guidance.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to waste your time and
Well, Nick's the arbiter of that.
You know, wizard, although I I think you look a little bit like the Good Witch.
Oh, Mr. Tessie, you're on thin ice. All right, go ahead.
That was a compliment.
Oh, okay.
Who are you addressing? Didn't you ever see the movie?
I think he was addressing McCray. McCray.
Just call me Glenda.
Look, as long as you don't compare me to a munchkin, I'm happy.
Adwich left a long time ago.
All right, okay, you guys, let's do his application.
Waste your time. We we did listen in on your your at your um staff briefing. Um understand that there is little um enthusiasm for addressing that issue regarding the rear yard versus side yard in overlap. Um we've internally discussed it, and there's no reason to waste any time on that. We're we're actually hard at work making your your revision for compliance. Um someday we can have any kind of a intellect semi-intellectual con uh discussion on that point, but it's not going to be tonight. So nor is it going to be part of the application when we bring the formal application in. Um our engineer, James McTagg, has confirmed that we are not adding any fill into the flood zone, which is the V zone. There's no intention to do that. Um the overall project, while comprehensive inside and out, actually technically reduces the floor area ratio uh for the property. Um we are uh, we have a very vibrant uh plan, landscape plan. Um provided a conceptual rendering of that to you. Our architects are are finishing up both landscape and in the uh building architect architects plans that we will be submitting to the Field Point Circle Architectural Review Committee uh in the coming weeks, so we by the time we appear again before the commission with our formal application, we we believe we should have a sign off from the uh uh from the uh Field Point Circle Arc.
Um So are you filling in the pool or are you making cover of the pool? Like, how are you converting the pool to?
Been making her crazy, this question.
Turning the pool to what?
You said the pool, you said the naterian is being converted to a gym, and the naterian is an underground swimming.
That's an underground structure.
Right, so how do you, how are you getting rid of the pool that's under there in favor of a gym?
Um my, they're pouring the fan, far as I know, they're they're uh
Just emptying it.
Concrete work there.
All right, so there's emptying the pool.
Yeah, I think it's it's a, I believe it's a la, I believe it's a lap pool.
Oh, okay.
So it's not that uh bigger deal in the scope of things, in the scope of things.
Okay.
So uh otherwise, uh there was an approval of the existing site plan that I cite in my letter. So we are actually going to lower somewhat the impervious surface on the property. Therefore, uh Mr. McTagg is working on uh his overall drainage concept, taking that into place. He's also working on uh septic system, where that's all taking place in the next few weeks. So I envisioned filing formally with you. Uh said within the next few weeks and appearing before you uh after we uh have gone through the in circle architecture review process. With that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions. We also have some of our consultants here, but again, since this is a high-level type of application, I have no intention of uh posing any more of your time or wasting any of your time.
I'm sure you're going through to A R C?
No, Field Point Circle has its own
Oh, of course they do. Oh, of course they do. I just zoned out. Okay.
That is, I know it's a private, I know you like to hear what what the neighbors have to say and what the local association has to say, so I'm just
Yeah.
Briefing you on that, that's all.
Okay, um yeah, I, you know, our main concern, we're just going to be looking, I I mean, in something like this, we're going to be looking for you to be as respectful of the coastal area. We're going to be looking to make sure that you've got the buffer planting, that you're doing very, you know, that you're thinking about landscaping in terms of sustainability, that you're thinking about impervious surface, that you're thinking about flooding, and that you're in full compliance with the zoning regulations. I mean, you, we all know that this stuff is before us just by a happenstance of how the zoning regs worked out. You've always objected to that. But in this case, you have a large app that's that it is a cam and it is in the V E. Uh um the lot is in the V E and that we can you can do whatever you can to have it be sensitive, and we'll we'll encourage you that. So I think
What you're referring to about my objections, but
Oh, I thought you had said to me years ago that you didn't think the one fifty cube plus should be going before the commission. Didn't you say that?
That's not what I, that's, I never said that.
Okay.
I think I did.
How could I say that when it's quite clear in the regulations?
No, though, that we should have changed the regulations. We debated it a lot. Andy Fox used to debate it too, but in any event, we're looking for
Oh, okay.
We're looking for
I don't recall, but I'm old.
You're old. You were look, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to say that. That's illegal. I take it back. Okay.
On the record.
It's a, um so uh it's co sensitivity to coastal resources
Absolutely.
Because of who you are, concerned where you are, concerned about the flooding, any impact on the neighborhood, be consistent with the zoning. I mean, this to me, really, I'm not quite clear why you're before us, because to me, I thought we weren't doing residential, but it's great to just say to you again, hey, just think about the zoning, be compliant, and you're good.
Well, okay, so so officially, for residential site plan, special permit, not site plan, but special permit applications, eh the ruling is that you don't make a pre-app or it's voluntary to make the pre-app just to get feedback, or you don't want to see us again. Not me personally, I mean, these type of
No, you have, you do have to come back for a site plan special permit, but it's voluntary if you want to come to the commission for a pre-app on oh of a hundred and fifty thousand cubes.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, nice to see you. Thank you, sir. And so with that
Make sure our people who are listening
Actually, just one more thing, Mr. Tessie.
Points that you raised.
One more thing, Mr. Tessie, just the the drawing sets of the site. If you can thin those out, um I have, I'd had a really hard under time understanding what's existing and what's proposed. There's so many layers on the same drawing. I just want to kind of see the before and afters, because it sounds like it looks like there's not a lot actually happening, but it's very hard to kind of make sure that that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, there's only certain spots where they're they're close to the house where things are really happening in the in the in the pool areas being run redone on that uh
Yeah.
Western uh western side, but uh I will pass that along to our engineers. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, okay, bye-bye. So um that's funny, because um I looked at that agenda ever since it came out and could also completely forgotten that we had decided not to do residentials because we, there's not much value add with it on the on the pre-apps, because they they don't and we all apparently across the board, none of us remembered that we had made that decision, so
Well, I'm glad Mr. Tessie also answered the question, because you, Katie's right, you could voluntarily come, so if that was the reason why, that would make sense.
That would, and plus, he he got feedback that matters, which is, we just want to make sure your zoning works and you're good with cam. Okay. So with that, um I forgot to ask for public comment on this app, but we can get it when it comes back in a
They're going to their own uh A R C, so they'll probably get public comment there.
Yeah, I think we'll be good. Okay, so do you guys want to go to decisions? And we have um, so we have um the the three twenty-eight Palmer Hill. We have one fifty-one ham, and uh we left Orchard open, and we have Bailey Bailey Wick, so we have three decisions.
Yeah.
And of course, I'm looking at he who decides the time waste. Oh, my God, Nick, you are just so dead now, and whenever you spend a whole lot of time talking about something, we'll go, okay, we're taking away your authority.
Okay.
Every way you want to do this.
Got to get my nose together here. Okay, uh Mr. LaRoe, just so I actually like to do that. I'm going to make sure I got my numbers right, because there's actually, there's two. We did one already, but this is the second one.
This is the resub. This is the second one. This is the big one. So they did the lot line revision, and now they're doing and now they're doing um Yeah, this is four fifty-five exactly, and the other one is four fifty-four.
Bear with me, bear with me for a second here.
It takes all of us sometimes.
Something about a village of munchkins?
Don't get distracted.
Don't get distracted, just do, they're all thinking they 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 they're going to have the night off.
There it is. Okay, so this is a preliminary re-subdivision, P L P Z twenty twenty-two, four, five, five, three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road. Um and this is to develop uh two lots. Uh one of four thousand
No, this is only a preliminary resub.
Yeah.
But it's not to develop the lots.
Create two lots, yeah.
Yeah, oh, that's what you said, develop, sorry.
No, create two lots, develop, you know, create two lots.
Mm-hmm.
Um Okay, uh we have uh, there is a variance pending for Z B A.
Mm-hmm.
Um D P W Engineering has required um from comments uh three eleven-three had recommended against the previous re-subdivision. So we're division comments stated no objection eh but wanted verification of underground utilities. Um conservation is yet to uh completely uh comment. Um and a uh green sheet was submitted, it's my understanding.
Yeah, and they, and we also need
That way I do. Here, here we go.
Yeah.
Green sheet was uh eleven-nine, that's why it was two days ago. Okay.
And you need, and we need a fully fleshed out, so when they come back for the final
Right, so
Yeah.
What I was going to say was uh motion to approve or our motion to move to final uh subdivision with the following
Mm-hmm.
Uh there to return with uh uh complete uh review of uh the site development plan. Um and take care, uh provide a Mylar, and the Mylar actually uh should indicate the the same access notes uh that on the previous subdivision. Um, hold on a second, and I just want some other thing. No, I think that was it, unless you have anything else to add.
Um, we need the drainage work when it comes in for final.
Yep, site development plan for final.
Okay, and then the other thing is, did we ever talk, did we just, we have to put to rest? Do we think any kind of open space is necessary on this resub? We just never answered the question, and it's
I don't know if we ever even asked it. I think
It's here, staff asked it, and we never discussed it, so um it, do we want to say at this point that um we've decided that we do not believe it is, because this is an existing um situation that is being resubbed?
Well, actually, aren't, isn't this lot not part of that original subdivision? Because I thought that subdivision map out that said these lots weren't part of it.
Oh, okay, so then would we consider?
I mean, you you could do like um a street um
Like an easement, not a
Yeah.
They don't have enough land to do anything else, but could we ask them for um to consider an easement?
Right, along the street?
Streets, like a streetscape thing.
Yeah, um and we just have to do it as, you know, when you move to final, please be, you know, consider this and submit this.
Right, so this would be a s- a open space easement
It would be
On parcel one R B at Palmer Hill Road?
I wouldn't even say what lot. I would just say
That's the, that's, that's how they're enumerated on the plan.
No, but I would, I would just say that the applicant is to consider is to consider an open space easement and not say further, not do their homework for them. You know, because they could make it anywhere they want.
Yeah, but see, then, you know, we're going to get
Along the street?
Yeah.
We're going to get in the back corner, in the middle of nowhere.
So we're just making a suggestion, so we might as well suggest where we want. Well, yeah, I also, I see it again, so you're going to have, you're going to have input into where it goes, so
Suggest where you want it, guys. Sorry.
As I said, so it should be at the street Palmer Hill Road on lot or on parcel R one B.
Okay, all right. Um so we did the, we did the development plan, we did. Um and also um they're going to come back in for final, when they come back in for final, they would have um they would have uh everything, they would be planning on, we we don't need to tell them the Mylar. Okay, I think we're good. Do we have um on this application, just reminding everybody, it's Baralek for Yesky. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Baralek, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McCray?
Uh aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
And Alvin is also aye, and with that, the motion
The Levy.
Levy, I asked him first, didn't I?
No, me first.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Yeah, all those things, okay.
Baralek, Levy, we're easily confused.
Do any Peters disagree?
With that, the motion passes five, nothing with Levy's vote. Sorry, guys. All right, so we go on to one fifty-one ham.
Okay. Uh, hold on a second. Okay, one fifty-one Hamilton Avenue, application P L P Z twenty twenty-two Okay, one fifty one Hamilton Avenue, application PLPZ twenty twenty two, three, one, three, one, three, final site plan special permit. Applicant is seeking to construct a second, uh, three bedroom, single family dwelling and a detached garage. Uh, pursuant to section six, five, so on, so forth of the BZR and eleven thousand seven hundred twenty one square foot parcel in the uh, R six HO zone, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, whereas in two thousand and five, the applicant was granted an HRO zone designation for the property as outlined under six one oh nine B two. Uh, currently the HRO zone definition has been amended by the Planning and Zoning Commission to HO. Uh, as required under the, uh, as required, the property came before the commission as a pre-application at the six eight twenty one meeting, uh, public hearing under file PLPZ twenty twenty one, one nine, three. The proposal was referred to the H historic district commission uh, for comment as provided on, uh, under section six, one, oh nine, B one, I. Uh, the HTC has submitted a letter dated, uh, one, four, twenty two, indicating approval of the design general plan that was presented. Um, per section six and six, one, oh nine, the applicant is seeking an incentive under, uh, the HO to have two dwelling units on the R six zone to property. Uh, the commission notes that the proposal seeks to exceed the standard yard requirements in the R six zone. The commission finds that, uh, per section six, one, oh nine, the planning and zoning co, uh, commission permits the applicant to exceed the standard yard requirements in the R six zone. Uh, zoning issue comments on eleven, two, twenty two, indicating proposal meets the requirements of the BZR. Sewer issue comments on, uh, ten, twenty five, noting all remaining conditions and comments can be addressed during building sewer, uh, sewer improvement phase. Engineering issue comments ten, ten, twenty two, indicating engineering concerns has, can be addressed uh, prior to zoning permit. Conservation issue comments eleven, nine, indicating comments to the plan have been addressed. Uh, wetlands issue to permit needs questionnaire and six fifteen, twenty two, indicating no action required. Uh, therefore motion to approve this site plan, special permit noting the following. Uh, per section one, oh nine, uh, B ten, the applicant shall prepare a perpetual declaration of preservation restriction. The declaration is to be reviewed by the town of Greenwich, the lot apartment for accuracy and completeness. And the declaration shall be filed on the town of Greenwich plan records, part is unpermitted sign off. Uh, part is unpermitted. The applicant shall submit a revised landscape plan dated, uh, uh, to P and Z staff, uh, and conservation for review. Uh, this is actually submitting the revised landscape plan, which we just got. That's stated, uh, today, eleven, ten. Uh, priorities zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a revised parking plan indicating workable parking, tandem parking for five vehicles. That's in conjunction with section one fifty, six, one fifty five.
That includes, uh, tandem parking. It's not tandem parking for five, right?
It's, it's, they have to provide to us a dimensioned plan that indicates that the parking works per section one fifty five, which is the parking, parking, uh, requirements. There is, with question was, and this is, this is, it, it's come up and it's kind of a little tricky here. Maybe we can actually discuss this a little bit.
Well, finish the motion and then we'll, and then we'll argue about it. Cause I gotta argue about other things.
The applicant should address any and all the remaining staff or end.
Last thing, last thing is they need to revise the drainage plan. Um, consistent, the reduced, because they have a reduced, um, foot, a reduced, um, square footage. So they need to update and get their drainage plan reviewed again prior, prior to permit. The existing sign off doesn't. It, it, obviously the drainage plan is, as the applicant said, is going to be fine because they're reducing the square footage. But the drainage review has to correspond to the actual new site plan. So we'll just add that, right?
And, and also you, you had said in the beginning to amend to the HO. It's not an amendment. It's just recognize that it now is HO.
Okay. Yeah, we, but we, we amended the HRO just to be an HO, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's just a recognition that it's an HO zone.
The, 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 the the regulation was amended.
Correct.
Okay. So drainage good. I think the sewer doesn't change, obviously, because it's the same number of units. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, I'm going to jump in and, um, I, I'm still struggling, you guys. I I'm not wild about the setbacks, number one. The, the very small setbacks. I and in addition, I've read six, one fifty five, like ten times tonight. And tandem parking spaces may be permitted for spaces that serve each individual unit of a two family dwelling. Now, then Patrick says to me, yes, but tandem is always allowed for one family dwellings. But six, one fifty five opens by saying on lots used for two families, used for two family and multifamily residential purposes. These standards below apply and the standard below is that you can do tandem. So you've got two houses on one lot. And I'm reading this in the strictest, narrowest definition, that tandem is not allowed. Um, I'll tell you honestly that, um, I'm not sure, I don't think staff agrees. We've been debating it. Um, but I read it that way at this point. And I'm also not comfortable with the setbacks. So I'm just saying that I I just don't, I, I don't think you need to be that close to the property boundary to add a house. And I think they're just putting a lot on here. I know six, one, oh nine lets them do it. But I have issues with it. So there's, there's my two cents. Go ahead, you guys.
Well, okay. If they're allowed to do it, then, um, you know, what prerogative do we have on that?
Well, they're not allowed to do it as, right. There, it's allowed, they, they, the regulation affords you the ability to adjust it if you see fit based on whether it creates a better site plan, et cetera. But they're not just allowed to do it just because they feel like.
So that's why I kept saying to you guys, does this fit six, one, oh nine? Are you comfortable that this is fitting six, one, oh nine? Because that's, I was kind of reading my brain out to you. I was still struggling a little bit and I, I was looking to hear from people. So.
Yes.
Um.
Yes. The, the, you know, the, the bulk of this building and the height of it along the property line is a not great, you know, it doesn't.
They did shrink it down, Peter Levy. I mean, they shrunk it down by a thousand feet.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still, it's still close to the property line, as you're saying. And you have this big wall, uh, just a couple of feet away from the property line on either side. It's, uh, uh, it impacts the properties next to it and, um, and not in a good way.
Well, they, it wasn't a thousand square feet. I don't think it was like five hundred square feet that they reduced.
I thought I asked the applicant because I couldn't. Go ahead, somebody say.
A thousand and four square feet they reduced.
That's what the applicant said tonight. I think he was bringing in the garage number as well as the house number.
Okay, well.
I think the house was just, was under six hundred.
Well, when they removed, they removed the attached garage, they eliminated four hundred and sixty four square feet. When they reduced the roof height by two and three quarters feet, that was forty three square feet. But.
Yeah, but the, and the thousand feet actually came in, they were counting half of the garage, half the basement last time. Their gray planes changed because they pushed it forward. So now none of the garage or none of the basement counts. So there's the rest of it.
Of the building. Thanks, Nick. I didn't figure that out. I was, so you're saying the bulk of the building, with the viewable bulk of the building didn't change. Half of the change in the square footage is just because they're, they were doing the FAR differently.
I think the bulk of the building in terms of overall height change, they do reduce the ridge height. I think actually, as you see it on the site, the width of it, say, standing in front of the building is pretty much the same.
Yeah, the four and a half, the four and a half to me.
Um, Bob, I think you're not allowed to talk.
I'm sorry.
Would you, would you agree, Mr. McRae, that the, the second floor also reduced in, in just overall width because of the way that the dormers are and?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a visual change and there was a physical change, well, by pushing everything down farther. Um, and yes, we got rid of the basement. That was a bulk of a, a lot of the FAR. But I think actually they even pushed the, the upper part of the two floors down. Uh, squeezed it down to actually, you know, make it, make it shorter than the other building and shorter than it was, uh, in the original proposal.
Let's, um, Mr. Yeski.
Okay. Are there conditions you would like to put on this that would help you about tandem parking? The potential for a two family house? Uh, what is it that could make this acceptable? Because we keep going around, but, um, is there anything or should we just go to the vote and you don't like it?
I would want to shrink the building some more, um, but I'm not sure where you guys come out. I don't know if that's a condition that would fly. I would want to shrink the building some more. Uh, but I don't know if y'all agree with that.
But if, if we have, we have a, if we have just a couple of, uh, to paraphrase, uh, our chairperson at various times over the last several years, if we have a couple, a couple of commissioners who are uncomfortable with this. Um, uh, what, what are our options? What, what are the options? We can vote on it tonight. They have to come back with a preliminary that we talked about. You know, what, what is going to happen here?
They'd have to come back. If it doesn't, if it doesn't, it, if it doesn't get approved, they'd have to come back. But the other thing is, I don't know, um, Mr. Levy, um, how strongly do you feel about this? I mean, I'm debating, you know, it's a special permit, you guys. But we also have six, one, oh nine. Does this fit six, one, oh nine? That's what I keep asking myself.
Well, you know, this is HO and, um, the idea is that uh, you, there is some preference for someone who, who designates their property. And so you do want to make some compromises and so on and so forth. But the question is, to what extent do you want to create a situation which is anomalous in the neighborhood? Uh, you know, I, I don't, I, is, is this that, you know, that, that, this, you know, there's this, a, a straw issue here. Um, and, um, I wonder if, um,
Can I ask?
If we can say that, you know, that, that, that we, if we, we just put instead of, um, uh, you know, one of the things that could make a, a big difference is I was trying to let the, subtly say that, you know, that the orientation of the building has a big impact on how you see this thing. So, um, uh, the, the most interesting elevations are facing north, south. And not on entrance. At the entrance, you see a, a pretty much a, a rather plain, uh, but, uh, you know, uh, a wide structure that takes up in, uh, the width of the property. Uh, which is not really what you see in the rest of the neighborhood. So, uh, usually you have a one story structure in the back there. Uh, you know, or a smaller building anyway, so that there's a lot of, um, light and air, um, that you, um, you know, that, uh, uh, becomes pretty much the norm. This is a little different. This is, um, uh, you know, like building up a big wall. So, um, it's a, it's a little icky, uh, is, is the point, you know, I just, uh, uh, if they, if they set back five feet on one side, that creates a little space in a corridor and it seems a little bit, it makes it feel like, uh, it's not a, uh, overscaled for the, for the uh, property and for the neighborhood, you know, anything that, you know, something like.
So let me ask a question, Nick. This is your area of town. What are your thoughts on the special permit considerations, the parking being sufficient and the setbacks and the consistency with six, one, oh nine? And the impact around you? I mean, this is, you are the most familiar of all of us.
Start, starting with at the curb. We have a house that's got some good detail to it. That's going to be retained in that state in perpetuity.
Yep.
Okay. So really kind of interesting house from, you know, you know, twentieth century. As you go back into the site, you're actually going up a rise towards the back of the building. Okay. So what the visual impact of what's happening behind it is kind of minimized by the building that's there. Uh, the slight slope in the, uh, in the driveway and the fact that it's actually, you know, behind two large buildings or another large building. Okay. Um, I think the design is, is now, uh, subservient to the existing building. It's really kind of, kind of tucked back there. And what are the better things is that all of the parking and all of that kind of things we don't want to see in the front yard is actually now in between the two buildings. I think if this, uh, you know, we're having a, it's two single family dwellings as opposed to multiple, you know, family dwellings. So we've got cars, but not a lot of them. We've got cars off the street because there's not a lot of parking on Hamilton Avenue in that area. Um, and the applicant's actually created a, a pretty good landscape plan. That's actually retaining a lot of, uh, uh, there and the open space in the back, which is predominantly what's happening with a lot of these lots in that particular curb area. There is a larger backyard and you're still maintaining a larger backyard of this one. Um, I think the fact that actually, yes, they have the parking in the middle. For me, it would be more of, can you confirm that that's actually going to work? So I don't have cars going in and out and out, looking for spaces to park. Because you can't get in and out. There's tandems not working. The garage is full of stuff, that kind of.
Right. Because if it doesn't work, they're not going to use it.
Right. So I think that's what I really need to understand is like, how does this actually work? Do I get cars in there? How does the tandem work? Uh, you know, that kind of thing. And with the site setbacks, as part of the HO and the six, one, oh nine uh, that we have, uh, whereas if here. So six, one, oh nine D incentives. Um, as number three, the commission may also modify setbacks and or green area requirement. They're actually asking for that as an incentive. The two things they're looking for is a second residence and the setbacks.
Okay, um.
So, uh, so Nick, do, do your concerns rise to the level of, of, uh?
No, he says he thinks it's okay, basically.
No, I think it, I think we're looking okay. I think the biggest problem I have is how does this parking actually work? Understanding the new revised plan because we're supposed to have the five spaces or five, actually five point two, I think it is.
Mm hmm.
Give me a little latitude on that one. I have a new revised plan and I've got two in a garage and three outside, and I don't see the three outside and I'm worried about that.
Yeah, that's really at the end, and I'm not really clear that they've, that they're allowed. Okay. Um, let's give a hand given, given what Nick has said, let's give a shot then at going ahead with the vote. I think we got all the conditions on it. Kitty, did you want to add something?
Just, just about the issue, um, of does the parking work? Cause he said that they have forty feet. But if you put two cars tandem, that's, you know, just, just less than that. It doesn't, it leaves you about five feet of wiggle room. So.
Right.
Perhaps they do it, yeah, perhaps they do it such that it's in front of the, you know, it's, it's that property owner's problem, so to speak, in terms of, you know, it's only his own cars he has to move. But still, I mean, is there physically enough wiggle room there?
Well, it's the wiggle factor and also, um, to, to what degree is there going to be a, a, like a, a, a real, um, is, is that, um, paved area a common space? Or is it divided? I mean, how does that work?
Right. And so my, my concern is he's going to, you know, he'll show a plan that conveniently fits these nine by eighteen parking spaces. But what, what do you want the staff to actually evaluate this for? In other words, can they back out into the street? Um, you know, what, what's okay and what's not okay?
Yeah. And, and what sort of, you know, thirty five point turn do you have to do to negotiate getting into the space and getting out, right?
Yeah, it, it seems awkward and, uh, it could be reconfigured to work. Um, they still have, they have, uh, some uh, extra space there to extend how, how, a, a, a car might be parked there. They don't have to keep the, the, the same curb lines. They could extend the, those curb lines to accommodate that, another car.
And could they go along the side of the building and extend the driveway? Um, and in which case that increases impervious. And is that okay?
Right.
Well, Mark, Margaret, Margaret Reader, do you, do you feel comfortable leaving these thorny issues to the staff to resolve or enforce?
I don't know. What do you, I mean, I think we just got a, Nick has made it a condition.
Um, I can expand on that condition? Just, I think this may help a lot.
Let's do that. Expand on the condition of how you want to do it.
Okay. So this is, uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a revised parking plan based on the revised site plan. Okay. So that we know exactly what we're going to be getting, what they're look, supposed to look at. And that revision is to indicate a work, workable vehicular movement. So we know they can get cars in and out.
Well, then we need.
Vehicular movements, parking and tandem parking for five vehicles.
We, we, we need to under, we need a diagram showing how the, not only how they're stacked, but how they, uh, actually.
Exactly, that's what I just said.
What what is that called?
It's it's, they need to demonstrate, okay. Vehicular movie, moving, okay, because they 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 have to show that, yes. You can get a car in there, this is how the car gets into the tandem space, how it gets out of the tandem space, okay? Now, I would actually expand on that a little bit more that if they can't do that, then what? Do they come back to us? Shows over, there's the question.
They come back to us.
So um if I could just add two cents here, um, so staff does this fairly regularly with the admin process on the two families. And and the guideline that that we give is that you need to segregate the parking so that. Uh, party A and party B on the tenant sheet there are not going to interfere with the other, so if they're blocking themselves in. We would be okay with you you doing that to your own tenant, but not to the other tenant, so uh.
What happens the third, how does that fit space, but how does that third? The 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 extra auxiliary space work then, is that a like a guest space? So either side could use it kind of thing?
Right, so when when we get into the odd numbers, that's where the difficulty comes, so what I what I was about to say was that we have familiarity with it. If we get a a plan that shows the measured parking spaces, we can certainly work with the applicant and understand why where it doesn't work. And if they're insistent on going forward with this plan, we could always bring it back to the commission. And show it to them so that we know where the difficulty is, but we we've we've been able to work it out pretty regularly with with applicants on the on the two family. Um, and particularly in situations like this where they have a long driveway, they've got a little bit of area, like Mr. Levy, I think, was just saying to to shift. Uh, maybe some paving areas to make maybe two spaces next to each other instead of tandem, so um. I I think, I think there's an opportunity to to uh for the applicant to do it here and staff to help them, uh but I I don't think it's something.
I would be preferable if if that were the case.
Okay, so Nick's gonna say it that way.
Okay, so we got the vehicular movement, so on and so forth, and the parking's got to show the vehicle segregation by tenant, that's what we were saying, Patrick?
Yeah, so uh like Mr. Levy was pointing out, you know, there's two and two makes sense, right? You know, but then there's that third, which is a flex spot, right?
Right.
Uh, when the odd number one is is, I I guess a better way to say the odd, the odd spot needs to operate on its own, right?
Well, in other words, not on its own, on both sides.
Right, for both sides, right, exactly.
I mean, ye- yes, on its own, but which which is also.
But I I understand what you're saying, right, and that would be, that would be the idea, so. If if you want to say that or just, I I I'm I'm putting it in the notes here for us, so I I think we understand what the. The mechanism is there that we want that that third space, that floating space to not have to be dependent upon.
Which is effectively a sixth space.
Right.
Right, so two and two, one for a front, one, two for back, two for front. And the fifth space is a guest space, and that's got to be free and clear at all times for whoever shows up.
I don't know, free and clear, but just needs to.
Yeah.
It needs to function ir- irrespective of the other cars, the other, the other four spaces.
Got it.
So does that mean it cannot be in tandem?
Uh, I think there needs to be one space that is not, uh, that would would be unobstructed, so if that, if that's in front of the garage, that's a problem. If it's not, then it it wouldn't be. Because I I do, I mean, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to design the site for the applicant, but that southern space there seems to be the most likely space to not put a car. Unless it's a guest.
It seems to me it does not work in front of the garage, because that that pins in. The other car that's uh outs, that's on the far side of the uh garage. And it can't get out. And it's also um in front of the garage, so. It's 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 spinning in two spaces.
Okay, so we can let, we can actually actually have them revise the plan, get it back to staff. Staff will double check, we've got two and two and a fifth space that's not impinged by the other other spaces or tandem stuff, tandem parking.
Yeah.
Okay, and they've got to, no matter what, it's got to be resolved prior to zoning.
Absolutely, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it any other way.
Great, so it's not coming back to us, that's fine.
Well, it will if there's an issue, a conflict, but we, I don't think we, I think we can negotiate that up till that point.
Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. McRae?
Hi.
Mr. Lo?
Hi.
Mr. Yeski?
Hi.
Uh, sorry, Barilak.
Oh, no.
I thought Barilak, I I thought we made a mo.
You're one an application off.
Oh, my goodness.
You're on the wrong application.
Sorry, my internet.
We shut poor Bob down, he was trying to help us out, okay, Mr. Yeski? They were talking, what'd you say?
Uh, I.
Mr. Yeski is an I, Albin is a nay, I'm still not convinced that tandem parking is allowed here. I don't like the setbacks, I I'm just uncomfortable with them. I don't like how it was sold to us as a one thousand square foot reduction in the building. And half of that was because they changed how they calculated the F A R, I missed that completely. Um, I don't like how it looks from behind. As I know you guys disagree, but it's only the ref aside, I'll leave that part out. I'm just not convinced as I read the regulations that tandem parking is allowed here, I just can't get comfortable with that, so I'm an A for those reasons. And so with that, the motion passes four one. Okie dokie, everybody want to go out and party?
One more, right?
What about Baileywick?
Yeah.
Oh, Baileywick, darn, I was all ready to go out drinking with you guys.
They're already flying with the monkeys.
Yeah, I was already gone with the monkeys, all right, Nick, Baileywick, make this easy for us.
Okay, uh, final site plan, special permit, PLPZ twenty twenty two, three nine eight, uh, twelve Duncan Drive. Uh, a applicant's first type plan, special permit, uh, approval to modify special permit number sixty two. Twelve lighting on platform, Thames Courts. Um, at the Baileywick Country Club at twelve Duncan Drive in the RA one zone. Uh, the um applicant has received zoning uh uh comments dated eleven two. Indicating it meets the B Z R. Uh, A R C reviewed the project at their six one twenty two meeting and. With indicate comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated seven twenty eight twenty two. Uh, therefore, motion to approve with the following comment. Uh, the applicant is to uh. Can prove uh have lighting uh only on the courts between October first to. Uh, March thirtieth of of a calendar year and and not at any other time. The lights shall be turned off at ten P M uh every day. Uh, house shields on the fixtures shall be supplied. Uh, specifically to the Angeles side of the fixtures. Uh, additional evergreen screening in terms of uh Arbor Body or similar. Shall be installed between the Angeles Drive Circle and the Courts, I believe that's the southern part of the property.
Actually say Arbor Body?
No, no.
Don't say Arbor Body, just say.
Hold on, evergreen screen similar to, I didn't care what it is, but what we wanted was. A hedge of evergreen between Angeles Drive and the Courts.
Can we say similar to Hamelons?
Or similar to.
Evergreen screening, it doesn't really matter.
All right, now, listen, you guys, you're saying shall be installed, I thought Rudy only agreed to consider it if necessary.
Well, we disagree.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And I'll waste my time anyway, I see fit, okay.
Okay, um.
All right.
Don't talk about wasting time.
And the applicant shall uh address any and all outstanding interdepartmental concerns. Anything else?
Do I have a second? Um, no.
I I I, this is nitpicking, you said March thirty, I don't know why that date, there are thirty one days in March. Is it to the end of March or not?
You know what it is, wait, 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 that's what they were asking for.
No, they asked for November through the beginning.
No, wait it all, one second, I, October first to March thirtieth, that's actually, it's in the staff report and I believe it's in the.
No explaining taste, but you know, it's it seems.
All right, do I, and did I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, Mr. Levy has seconded, Mr. Lo has clarified, Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
I.
McRae?
I.
Lo?
I.
Yeski?
Ask me last.
Alrighty, Albin is an I, Mr. Yeski?
Uh, I.
Well, you can still say nay, I mean, you know, feel free, it'll still carry. Do you want to feel good about it?
Feeling about this.
Then, okay, do you want to change your vote? Feel free.
I don't want to make them uh penalized, I think we got it to take a look at it, I said it in the hearing enough.
When it's a four one, you're just registering that you have a concern for the record and you're not impacting the outcome, so if you want to vote nay.
But Dennis, she does sound a little defensive after that last vote, go ahead.
All right, go ahead, so you're an I?
No, I'm an I, I'm an I.
All right, okie dokie, so the motion passes, uh, Albin is eyes, so the motion passes five, nothing, okay, now we're done. All right, okay, bye bye.
Belly up to the bar.
And go check my flying monkeys.